Got it, okay.
You've got your coffee?
Hey, I'm ready.
Okay.
All right. Okay, good morning. We will call to order this meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And welcome to your boardroom. And if we could have a real call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Supervisor Parks.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
And Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And good to see everyone. Next up, we are honored to have for our moment of inspiration Captain James J. McHugh, who's the United States Navy commanding officer at Naval Base Ventura County. Captain, if you please, would step forward. Captain joined us in this county for a second time, but in charge this time. In February 2009, he reported to assume command. He has a very extensive background in his services to our country in the Navy. Cumulated over 2,800 flight hours and over 400 carrier arrested landings and just significant decorations for his service to our country. It's a pleasure to have you here this morning, Captain.
Well, thank you, thank you. And good morning, county supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for inviting me to address you this morning. And believe it or not, it's almost been a year since I took command at Naval Base Ventura County. I've learned a lot and have met a lot of very interesting and wonderful people throughout the county over the past year. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, the county supervisors, and also the citizens of Ventura County for your outstanding support of the base, and more importantly, for your support of all the men and women in uniform and their families here in Ventura County. I'm truly proud to be part of Ventura County and blessed to have so much, such a supportive community where my installation resides. Not all base commanders have that luxury, and so I thank you for that. As you know, today's military is an all-volunteer force made up of the best and brightest young men and women we can find. The sailors, marines, and DOD civilians at Naval Base Ventura County are no different and are part of that best and brightest, and are contributing every day, one way or another, in preserving the freedoms that we as Americans enjoy, day in and day out. Whether it's by constructing a hospital in Iraq, or flying an E2 Seahawk eye off the deck of an aircraft carrier in support of troops in Afghanistan, or to research and development for future weapons systems, these young men and women are unselfishly serving their country so that they can, we can live free and enjoy many opportunities that this United States of America has to offer. As I stand here today, over 52,000 sailors are deployed throughout the world. That number includes many sailors from right here in Naval Base Ventura County. We've got BAW 117, who is currently completing an eight-month deployment onboard the USS Nimitz. We've got Naval Construction Battalion III returning this next month after a six-month deployment. And MCB IV, who just deployed last, a couple weeks ago, to Afghanistan. And numerous individual augmentees who are deployed throughout the world supporting our nation's overseas contingency operations. Your Navy in Ventura is heavily involved in our nation's security. The Navy is responding today to the most urgent needs of the Haitian people in support of the joint inter-agency and international efforts. And MVBC is contributing to that effort by providing much-needed generators and personnel to support, and to support that equipment. The global reach and responsiveness of our forces was very evident when, within hours of that earthquake, the Navy had already made plans to provide assistance if called upon by the President. In fact, the first asset to be in Haiti was a US Navy destroyer, the USS Higgins, which was in the vicinity. And to date, there are 12 Navy ships and an amphibious readiness group in the vicinity of Haiti supporting Operation Unified Response. So in closing, I'd like to, for you to walk away with a thought that you can be extraordinarily proud of the young men and women who served in your Navy every day, every single day, in every place on the planet. They are doing good work on every ocean, on every continent, on the sea, above the sea, and under the sea. And as we've committed ourselves in the last few years to the deserts of Iraq, Afghanistan, and Djibouti, the young men and women who wear this uniform would make each and every one of you extraordinarily proud of what they do, how they do it, and most importantly, how they represent you as Americans. And it's a great pleasure and privilege and honor that I have to be a part of that organization. So thank you again for everything that you do, for your support, for your concern, and for your interest in supporting the greatest Navy that has ever sailed this world. Thank you.
Captain, thank you. And Captain, we thank you. It has been a pleasure to work with you this past year. I look forward to our work together. Tomorrow, we have a wonderful ribbon-cutting of Navy housing in Camarillo, Catalina Heights, as Project, the Navy, committed to taking what was 50-year-old housing, tearing it all out, and putting in brand-new housing for Navy, for military families. And it's just a beautiful complex of housing and services for our military families to live in. So I look forward to the ribbon-cutting, and it was just a real commitment for the Navy, and appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I thank the support of the supervisors on that effort also.
Thank you, thank you for your inspiring words. And if you would, please, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Captain.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it does seem like the men and women of the, of the service get younger every year when I see them. They're so young. Thank you, Captain. What'd you say? That, too. Yeah. All right. Next up, then, we have our minutes from October 13th and the 20th.
Remove the recommended action.
He's taking over that right, right on top. I love it.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. A motion, a second, to adopt the minutes.
To continue.
To continue the minutes. I thought they were ready. We received them, yeah. Yesterday, sorry. Okay. Do we have, where's my little box to do the motion thing? Oh, there it is. Okay. Looking for the box.
Okay.
Um, I don't think so. Got them yesterday, the day before. Okay, those are passed. We have one abstention, just not having received them, so. All right. All right, thank you. Agenda review, Madam CEO.
Yes, Chair Long. Agenda item five, the meeting minutes for October 20th. There's, in the, in motion content, the word previous was changed to, oh, I guess, to pervious? Or was it the other way around?
Okay.
Consent agenda item 25, we've requested continuance to February 2nd. And consent agenda 27, we're asking for removal of a posting of an unscheduled vacancy for June Howie, and you've received corrections on both of those. On the regular agenda item 43, there's a letter submitted by John Chris from the Farm Bureau. You've all been provided those. And a regular agenda item 47, there's a revised 2010 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule calendar.
Okay. Okay, with those noted changes on the agenda, anything else from board members for agenda review? Okay, pleasure, the pleasure of the board.
Move the agenda as modified.
It's a motion and a second.
Thank you.
I have a question on item 10. And this is regarding the requirement for binding arbitration, which isn't in line with the board's policy. And if there isn't someone to answer that, I can maybe wait till later in the meeting.
Okay, this is a area agency on aging item, and Victoria's not usually here, pardon me. Oh, she is here. Okay. Well, why don't we answer that question now, and then we'll finish up with the consent calendar. Good morning, Victoria.
But I also see that it's mandatory, so are we stuck with having to accept the contract that requires binding arbitration?
Yes.
Okay, well, that kind of answers the question.
It's just that your policy is that the CEO can't sign the contract. It has to come to your board.
Okay.
And so you can sign it, but I guess the CEO can't. Normally, this is a contract due to the amount that the CEO's office could have signed. But because of that language, that we were not successful in getting them to remove, it has to come to your board for signature.
Okay. And I just find that curious, that we're forced to accept that kind of negotiations. But if that's, if it's mandatory, it's mandatory. It's from the federal government?
Apparently, yes. It's fair, pardon me.
Okay.
We don't have to accept it, but we don't get the money.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have, I just want to call out, before we vote on the consent calendar, item 17, which is Keppa House and Prototype's Women's Center for Alcohol and Drug Program Residential Treatment. We have a dramatic shortage of treatments for drug and alcohol-dependent people in Ventura County. And I just am very appreciative that the staff was able to come up with some limited increase in funding for Keppa House and Prototype Women's Center. If you've visited either one of those, I mean, those people are doing God's work trying to turn people's lives around, and we see it every day in our dependency court. We see it in all kinds of other impacts on the family and the community from people that can't get themselves off of alcohol and drugs. So I just wanted to thank staff for hustling and coming up with some limited funding increases here.
I would just say also, it's nice to have the grant allocation instead of having to take it out of the general fund, which we've been faced with in the past.
Okay. Any other comments on consent or questions? Okay, pleasure, the board.
Move the consent calendar?
There's a motion and a second to move the consent calendar. I'll vote. Okay, and that passes. All right, thank you. Yes. Next up, we have an opportunity for public comments before the board. And we do have nine public speakers. I would ask that you just keep your comments as succinct as possible. We have a full agenda, but we do welcome your public comments. And first up, Wendy Halderman.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here on behalf of the Wright Library Issue. I would like you guys to maybe reconsider looking at the recommendation made by the County Library Commission and the County Library Director, which resulted in closing of the Wright Library. We've looked at the MOU that was signed by the Board of Supervisors in 97, and by our city manager, Donna Landeros, in 1997. And Wright was guaranteed 40 hours of baseline service, which should not require any additional funds from our city. So we would like you to relook at that, because according to that contract, those hours are already paid for through our property taxes. One of the reasons we were given for closing our library was that there was this precipitous drop in property tax revenue. But we also looked at the assessors' website, and we can see that unincorporated areas are basically flat. There's no decline there to speak of. And Ventura has a very minimal drop, and it's actually the second-highest on record. So our city is very concerned that we're paying double the property tax we were 10 years ago, and that we're losing services. It's, it's just morally wrong to take away this library. Across the street, we have Foothill Tech High School, which is the county's top-scoring high school. Believe it or not, we beat Oak Park in the API exams. So that's a really tough thing to do. We're very proud of that. And to take this library resource away from these kids is just, we just think that's a very, very wrong thing to do, because it does not support our community values. We're also looking at the five-year projections for the county library, and it does not look good. They've got unsustainable overhead. We're worried we're going to lose more services and more libraries in Ventura. And we're actively looking at, you know, using other systems to run our libraries because of this issue. We don't want this to happen to our community. We don't think it's right that we lose this library that the county had agreed to operate, so we'd like you to look into that for us. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Miley.
My name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a hard name.
Miley Holmbruck.
Superpronounced. It's, good morning, of supervisors. My name's very difficult. It's Miley Holmbrucki.
Thank you.
And rhymes with smiley.
Sorry.
And it's an ancient Finnish name. I'm the founder of Library Justice, and I know that a few of you have seen the emails that have gone around, and our group is right now focusing on reopening Wright Library. It seems, when I explain this to, you know, friends around the country, what are, what are happening, I happen to, I have a lot of library friends in, you know, Virginia, Montana. I was just with a friend from Wyoming yesterday, or Sunday, and she happens to be a librarian, too. They're kind of shocked how this happened. How did this library close, the third busiest library in the county that served, you know, eight schools and two retirement homes? Why weren't other things done to make sure that the library stayed open? So obviously, it is sad that all this effort and all this time, that when we could be doing other things, helping the homeless, or, you know, feeding all sorts of people, that we have to focus on just trying to save this basic need of a library. But we are having to fight really, really hard to make sure that this error is corrected, because there are many, many, many ways to have that library stay open. We're all willing to say, okay, two days a week, let's do what we need to do to operate within the budget. But there are children, thousands of children, who cannot, they do not have library access. They cannot go down to Foster. There's parking issues. There's structural issues at Foster, the safety. They haven't even done the, the assessment of the building to see if it can hold the staffs from, right, you know, the, the books were closed very quickly. I wanted to know how, someone said you can bring PowerPoint presentations here, and I was wondering if someone could tell me, because I'd like to bring a presentation to you next week with some budget information and some facts, so that you can really be aware of all the circumstances that happened regarding the closure. And I was wondering who, how I could get training to do that.
You, you need to submit that to our clerk, and she can go through all the policies that relate to the presentation of PowerPoints.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So I can call you right to, after the meeting, or?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you so much. So, anyway, so I'll come back with more information for you, but I just wanted to let you know that we have this, you know, group who is passionately working to help these children to ensure that they have library service. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up, we'll have Laura Gullison.
Very good.
Thank you.
Another tricky name. Hi, I'm Laura Gullison. I put down "community activist" and "library justice," and I'm really impressed with this. I haven't been down in a while. It looks great. My concern is, we have gone to meeting after meeting after meeting, and I just changed my 2009 calendar to the 210, and it struck me, oh, Ventura County Library Commission, oh, city, you know, Library Commission, oh, you know, this. But through it all, we are not receiving answers. We are simply told, show me the money. And then we try, okay, we try from that tact. Why are you spending on more personnel? Why are, and after you ask your question, there's a decent wait, usually no answer, and then you hear, next. So then, we go to the email. I finally tracked down that our county library services director is renting three buildings, and it took me a long time to find the rent. I went to a Camarillo meeting of the Ventura County Library Commission, and Mr. Fulton asked if I had a question, and I said, oh, yes, I do. How much rent are we paying on the, by now, we have found out we have three buildings? And Mrs. Griffin said, $200,000. Well, that comes out of all 14, not just Ventura. More recently, I sent an email asking how much staff are in these buildings? And the return was, I cannot give you the names of those people working in the buildings. Well, I didn't ask for the names, I just asked the number of part-time and full-time. So it's been a real concern, and on my slip, I didn't put "right closure." I put "reopening right," because that is our focus. We feel a great injustice has been done to the people of East Ventura, the parents, the teachers, the ones that can't be here to speak for it. And now, Mr. Fulton announced that indeed, the grand jury was going to investigate certain aspects, and I guess they work in secret. But that was an encouraging note, that enough of us have gotten, had the time to write and tell them. So my plea is, please don't do anything more about transferring all those books and things until these, all these facts are out, and let's wait. And if the grand jury, after a thorough investigation, says, of course, it was justified, we don't have the money, I know we'll rest a lot better. So that's my plea. Don't let Mrs. Griffin hire anymore. On December 15th, she hired another supervisory position from her old area. So the money just keeps kind of gushing, and yet, this important library that we pay a dollar a year for is just gone for all of the East Ventura seniors, residents, and students. So thank you, and please take it under consideration.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Barbara Chenery. Is it Barbara Chenery?
Yes.
Yes, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. I wasn't going to speak on the library, however.
You're under public comment, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was going to speak or address the issue of the cessation of Ospring, of the chemical involved, as Roundup, that might be easier for you to recognize. I'm fairly new to the area, and I'm not as familiar with the watershed and exactly what's been done. I have a broad knowledge. However, I am familiar with the devastation of poisons, and that's what Roundup is. It has certainly what Monsanto considers positive effects, but if you'll do the research yourself, we're all fairly computer-suave, and, and check it out, that there's really more negatives than positives. And it, it doesn't just apply to what they're putting these chemicals on, whatever they are. Unfortunately, it gets passed down, not only through the soil, but everything that lives in the soil, and ultimately, us in the atmosphere. So it's one more of those issues that ultimately become a health concern for us, too. So I hope you will consider stopping the use of this in our watershed. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carol Charbonneau. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here with pesticide-free Ohi. You've seen us before. We're very thankful that this injunction has come through, that, to stop the use of pesticides, and we know that it benefits us all by keeping our ecosystem safe for not just the endangered species, but all of us that could easily become endangered species with the use of such harsh chemicals in our watersheds. So as we protect these beautiful creatures, the red-legged frog, the toads, the steelhead, they end up protecting us, as we are with the Endangered Species Act, so, from this poisonous glyphosate, and one less really noxious substance that goes to our oceans. The future of water is a serious concern, and we don't want to poison what we have left. Thank you.
Thank you. And is that it, Webberna? No. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it jumped. Nanette Gill. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nanette Gill, and I'm a health professional for 48 years. And this chemical, this poison, glyphosate, has something in it called Roundup. And I have personally witnessed two nice women that ended up with tumors because they sprayed weeds in their driveway. The one got it in the groin area, tumor groin, and the other one was in her throat.
Good morning. I'm Nanette Gill, and I'm a health professional for 48 years, and this chemical, this poison, glyphosate, has something in it called Roundup, and I have personally witnessed two nice women that ended up with tumors, because they sprayed weeds in their driveway. The one got it in the groin area, tumor groin, and the other one was in her throat. So, I'm upset about the fact that Ventura's water supply to the homes also is part river water, and some of this can get into our water. And I don't think we need any more poisons. We can do this a natural way. Let's keep our balance to this world in a better state, if we're responsible. So, I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Patty Pegeling. Good morning.
I have some copies here. I just have one of the letters that would make more copies, not everybody's, not from the community children's advocacy against pesticide poisoning, they're doing, they're stopping the use of glyphosate. So, I understand that all of you have received the letter from the two lawyers, Kate Nieslander and Jason Weiner, on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity, for pesticide-free Ojai Valley, the Ventura Coast Keeper, and the Wish Royal Foundation, requesting immediate cessation of all spraying of glyphosate in all areas of the Ojai Valley, which have previously been designated as critical habitat for the California red-legged frog, arroyo toad, tidewater goby, and Southern California steelhead. And, as you are all aware, there is an injunction in effect that prohibits the use of glyphosate in red-legged frog habitat. And if you've looked at the maps that you received in the packet, the county is currently spraying glyphosate in critical habitat for the frog in the Ojai Valley, specifically along Matilahua Creek, and there are plans to spray San Antonio Creek. And I'm not sure that, I don't think the spraying has started in that creek yet, right, the San Antonio Creek? According to the injunction, there's also a 200-foot buffer around the aquatic areas that are home to the red-legged frog. The county's use of glyphosate is in direct violation of the existing injunction. We're requesting the Board of Supervisors to confirm that glyphosate application to red-legged frogs, Southern California steelhead, arroyo toad, Santa Anna sucker, and tidewater goby, critical habitat, be ceased, and that glyphosate application to roadside, stormwater infrastructure, flood control infrastructure, trails, culverts, or waterways that are hydrologically connected to these species, critical habitats, has ceased within 15 days of the date of the letter that you received, which was, I believe, hand-delivered on January 21st. This issue affects not only Ojai, this is all of our health. It's impacting all of us. We're all connected, the watershed, the air, it goes into the oceans, and we can't afford to do anymore. You've heard all the testimony, we've come several times to talk with you, and I know there's so many things to consider, the, you know, getting rid of the arundo, and what do we do with it? We have to look first at the law here, and then we can look at the, you know, the non-toxic solutions. So, we look forward to working with the county to create truly a healthy, sustainable county. And we don't need any more pesticides and herbicides used. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Hodges.
Hey, everybody. Nice learning on the job side here, Ms. Long.
Thank you.
Very generous with the five minutes I might have, and I'm sure you'll hear about it later. If you get more than six people, you can go three, and everybody'd be happy to feedback.
I'll take your advice, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, so, we've been here before. We think you may or may not have listened. We've been assured that we are considered. You've got this injunction in front of you, and it's convenient for me to believe that if one of you change your vote on the San Antonio Creek scenario, that the whole agenda item gets revisited, and I'm hoping that that's true, so that one of you could consider doing the right thing and just slowing this thing down. Because, I don't know anything about the law. I'm not here to tell you what's the truth on that part, or how compliant staff has been with certain regulations. That's not my thing. My thing is, please, slow down and review this situation. It's pretty out of hand, and if these people from the Center of Biodiversity have their way, you're either going to change your ways, or it's going to cost the library even more money. On that note, I almost brought for show and tell a big pumpkin here. It's actually in my car, I just couldn't lift it, but I'll bring it next week. And I can turn that pumpkin into $300, because that's just, I've got that skill set in the health food industry, and we can give it right to the library, for sure. It's a no-brainer. Which brings up something that Joseph, who's next, what's Joseph's last name?
Gilbert.
Joseph Gilbert said, he says that just because you don't get a no-brainer, doesn't mean you don't have any brains. It's a no-brainer that that library should stay open. That, you know, sometimes it's more expensive to do nothing, and if you just watch this library and its system flush down the toilet, just like you're doing the red-legged frog in this moment. The red-legged frog is endangered, you're spraying glyphosate in their habitat. When you look at the map, there's an overlay, those lawyers did a great job. It's not even close. Now, I understand Ms. Camacho inherited a bunch of stuff, and as I recall, their demarcation is 15 feet, but the law is, it's got, you can't spray it within 200 feet. All that aside, solutions. What's our next step as a team? We've got to get ahold of the Army Corps of Engineers, and get them to dial back on this no-hand-removal mentality. There's got to be a balance here. If they will accept some mitigation for the hand-removal of this arundo, we can really move forward as a people on this. It occurs to us that the rivers swell, and they wash all that arundo down anyway, but the Army's worried about some rocks getting moved around, and some habitat being disrupted, but it gets disrupted every time that the rivers flow. So, let us go in there, take it out by hand, by the way, create jobs. My personal thing is, to keep the libraries open, and to do that, create jobs for youth. The jobs, youth can have a little bit of money and use the libraries, and we can get out of this dumbing-down of our people. Poison is not good. You folks gave some guy up in Ojai $80,000 to take this arundo out by hand in the city proper. We got a letter from this guy saying, "Don't call it poison," because it's, because Pam Lindsay's a nice person, "Don't call it poison." That doesn't work for me right now. We got turned over to the Ag Commission by Pam Lindsay. I went to the Ag Commission's office, they can't see us, they don't want to talk to us. What I found out is, they only enforce laws, unless there's no law, then they can make up a law, which is what Pam Lindsay's asking them to do. She's asking them to make it illegal to transport arundo on the city streets, so that we can't use it. We have a buyer for every, every part of the arundo thing. They want to make paper up in Washington State. The guy will pay for shipping and shipping. Save that money and give it to the library. Come on, let's get proactive. What else? Audra Strickland. Did Audra Strickland move into somebody's district? This is the scariest woman I've ever seen. This is absolutely the scariest woman. Whoever, if she moves in, I'm working for that campaign to keep her out, I don't care who it is, except for you. I mean, I went to the Carol's Restaurant. Can you imagine having a meeting at Carol's Restaurant? Well, maybe you can. Blah, 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 the water issue in the state of California, the smelt up there, she called it a stupid fish, is holding up the progress for the whole state. Those fish, these red-legged frogs are indicators. I guess I could go on. Stop doing it for the money.
Seven seconds.
Stop doing it for the money. I hear that about the dam removal, nothing personal, and I heard it just a minute ago. The only people that benefit when you do it for the money are the people with the money.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Thanks for your time.
Thomas Pratt. Good morning.
I'm Thomas Pratt. I don't know a lot about what the fellow was speaking about, and I do have a hearing problem, but I am in favor of libraries. Last fall, for about a three-month period, I had the privilege of working with the Ventura County Behavioral Health Department Older Adults Program as a peer recovery coach. A wonderful experience I want to report, and I also want to commend the staff. They do a wonderful job, particularly the young ladies that go out and see the folks that are suffering from mental illness. They, everyone, have a wonderful heart for that My experience there tells me that there probably is a better way to do some of these things that are being done to serve the, particularly the severely mentally ill seniors, and I think it's a matter of the delivery system and perhaps the cost-effectiveness in the way it's being delivered. I have various suggestions I'd like to make. This is not the place to do that, I do not think. I would like to ask the Board to consider a panel of independent citizens that would look into the present policy and procedures, and the planned policies and procedures for serving the mentally ill of Ventura County, particularly seniors, and particularly the severely mentally ill. I also request that that panel look at the cost-effectiveness, particularly with respect to Proposition 63. My wife and I live in a senior community of approximately 500 citizens. I've been involved in community work there for some time. I know from experience that many of the seniors that live there would voluntarily serve their fellow seniors, given the opportunity, given the training, and I know that statistics show that some 25% of seniors suffer from depression. I submit that those in their 70s and 80s and on, that's a much higher number, even then. Since we are the fastest-growing segment of the society, I submit that why not use those folks in a similar capacity that I served last fall to work with their fellow seniors? And I can tell you that I got much more out of that than the folks I was serving, and I think that's very important for seniors. It gives them something meaningful to do, and I would like to see that really highly considered by the Board. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Pratt, thank you, and thank you for your service and your thought for this. Melanie Roy, the Director of our Behavioral Health Department, is here, and I'm sure she's taken notes, and someone will be in contact with you.
Okay, I do have, I do have my proposal in writing I'd like to submit to the Board.
Very good, thank you. If you pass that to...
One moment, please.
In a moment, okay, great. And we also, in the future, when you come into the boardroom, we have assisted hearing devices?
Yes.
Okay. And we welcome you, thank you. Leslie Purcell. Yeah, Purcell. Good morning.
Good morning. I think Mr. Bennett is my representative on the Board, and although I used to live in Oxnard, and Mr. Zaragoza would have been then, I'm here to speak on closing of Wright Library, but I'd like to make a couple remarks that I'm just brought to mind about the Roundup issue. I lived at the bottom of Dipanga Creek for a period of time, and it was also very controversial about removing arundo there, and I believe that they allowed volunteers to go and remove a lot of it by hand, and I suggest that some of the arguments that I heard folks make should be paid attention to, that it could create jobs, as well as volunteer effort, including a biologist, to monitor the removal. And, you know, I would like to have the Army Corps be a part of that, if possible, you know, and I think it could be a win-win situation if they could remove the arundo and actually use it for something usefully, as the gentleman had proposed. Okay, now, in terms of the library, I believe that there could be a SEQA issue, California Environmental Quality Act issue, because this was a very heavily-used local neighborhood walkable library, and it was used by kids from eight schools in the area, including one for handicapped and/or disabled, Dorothy Boswell, and they could walk there on field trips and use the library. There's senior housing in the area, and this other gentleman spoke to the need for seniors to be engaged, and, you know, I think that the fact that they could walk to this library and use it was very important. And now, if people are expected to drive downtown, it's going to create hundreds and even thousands more car trips to an already congested area, and that would bring in possible effects on air pollution, air quality. We've got the greenhouse gases now to be considered as part of SEQA, and I think arguably, the closing of the library could be considered a project under SEQA because of these traffic impacts. I don't think anybody has ever done any study about it. I mean, I asked the Board of Supervisors, has anybody done a study on it? And I actually would also like to ask for something in line of an injunction from the Board to stop any further action to remove books and materials from the library until some of these issues can be looked into further. In addition, I think there are some contractual issues with the agreements between the county and the city, and the Board of Supervisors has signed off on these various memoranda of understanding and lease agreements, in which the county has the, to me, legally-binding duty to operate, staff, and run this library. And I believe the county could be in breach of that agreement unless the Board has taken some formal action to rescind those agreements. And as far as I understood, that has not happened. So, I'd like to ask the Board if they intend to formally rescind or change these agreements, or, you know, is there some way that the community can have more of a voice? Because I feel like the community, you know, has, as somebody else mentioned, has gone to these hearings and meetings and appealed to the city of Ventura to furnish money to keep the Wright Library open, but in fact, it's the county's duty to operate that library. And I would appreciate anything that you, Mr. Bennett, could do on our behalf, and I know everybody else is also aware of budgetary issues, but to take it out on the children and the seniors, and the fact that this was such a walkable neighborhood library is so important. And I'll just say, as somebody who's used it, I really appreciated it. On rainy days, especially in the winter, which we've had, people can go in there, they had a fireplace, they could get warm and dry. I've seen kids come in after school to do that, too, and, you know, it's a very important community center, as well as a library.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell, for your comments. It is, for those who aren't familiar, practice of the Board, that we don't comment on items brought to us. Certainly, the CEO and the respective board members have heard your comments, and will address them through other avenues. Okay, that concludes our public comments. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, then we'll move to board comments, and Mr. Bennett, would you like to lead off there?
Yes, I will, and I, we don't, I mean, our policies, we don't respond, but I do, there's some general things I think I do want to mention. We have great speakers today in terms of public testimony, and it reminds me of the great value of having public testimony. And I know Mr. Hodges made some reference to, "I hope you're listening," and I just want to emphasize, we're listening really hard, and these are really hard issues, and that's what, that's what... And that's what, that's what, so, just, I just, I appreciate people giving up their time, coming down here and trying to talk about making this happen. First thing, the Wright Library is a great library, and it's really served the community really well. And it is completely understandable that everybody's really frustrated, including myself, that the Wright Library has, is, is closing down. The fundamental question that I think we have to get out there is that, the way it's arranged in this county is that each city decides how the property taxes of that city are going to be spent, the property taxes that are allocated for libraries. Each city makes that decision. And in some cities, like in Ojai, there was some reference that Ojai, you know, has more square footage per person, et cetera, but the people of Ojai have taxed themselves specifically for their library, and they've been able to do that. So it is, it is very much, I think, a position that each city has to be able to make that decision. And Camarillo, the city of Camarillo, they didn't come to the county and say, we want a subsidy from the county so that we can build a new library and open a new library and have it for so many hours. The city of Camarillo put millions of dollars up every year because they value the library and they want that to be the case. Again, these different cities have not come to the county and said, you know, you fund our library, they use the property taxes that they collect. I just, I just want to be realistic in talking with you. I don't think that it's realistic to think that a majority of the Board of Supervisors would vote to take money from anyplace else in the library system, from any of the other libraries, and, and switch it here, because every one of the other cities in the library system would ask for that. So I think from a realistic standpoint, no one city, the Board of Supervisors is, is not going to intercede on behalf of one city, particularly when other cities have stepped up and either out of their general fund, like Camarillo, to simply put money in for the library, or where their citizens have taxed themselves. They, I think that's the reality, I just, I think that's important to get said. This, Mr. Hodges made the comment that if we took the money for the arundo and used it, we, you know, we, the money we could save by not doing the, the arundo, we could use it to, to open the library, I think is, sounds very good, and it sounds very attractive, we find some, some way to do that. The reality is this, though, we have to make the decisions based on what's really out there. There is a, we have a $5 million grant to get rid of all of the arundo in the Ventura River, all of it, right? We have to start, and so we have to start at the top and start working our way down. That $5 million grant, if we try to take that out by hand, no one has been able to show us that if we take it out by hand, we could do it for anywhere near the cost that you could take it out by using the sprayer. So the real question is, do we leave the arundo, pass up the grant, or not? That's what we've been wrestling with, and I know Mr. Hodges has been trying to, to identify things that we could do in terms of selling the arundo, et cetera. And if somebody ever comes up with an actual plan, then, then that makes, makes some sense for us. So I, I'm just constantly, you know, I think these are hard decisions, and we have to have a real solution that we can make, have make work for us. So, and finally, Mr. Pratt's comments, I just think really helped bring another dose of the challenges that we face here at the board. We have library issues, we have arundo issues, and we have depression and senior issues and social issues that are pushing us to the wall in terms of trying to take care of the citizens in Ventura County. And we have to hustle on all fronts to try to make the best decisions that we can, to try to be able to make that happen. But if we, if we make wrong decisions, and we actually have less, fewer resources to be able to address all of those problems. The other things that I would just like to, my, my prepared comments that I'd like to make, the, we reviewed all of the various commissions when Supervisor Foy, when he first came on board. You know, one of the very first commissions that came in front of us was the Oakview Rec Commission. And it was, well, what's the purpose of the Oakview Rec Commission? I just want to point out that this, this Saturday, the Oakview Rec Commission hosted a fundraiser and bought 168 new chairs for the Oakview Community Center with a fundraiser in Oakview. It's a wonderful, wonderful community event, and that's, that's something that doesn't get factored in very easily in terms of benefit cost ratio when we were looking at those. So it just reminded me of that, in terms of that. We had Ventura Unified School District today at noon is going to be unplugging, or celebrating the first plug-in hybrid school bus in Southern California. And that's, that's the first year in Southern California, and we certainly want to commend Ventura Unified for doing that. Kathleen Wilson's article about the homeless prevention that was in the Star yesterday, we, the, people need to continue to support all the local prevention efforts that are out there and talk, we've, we've done a great job. It is not the only thing that we can do, but we cannot stop now with this tragedy visiting us in terms of homelessness. We can't stop our efforts in terms of homeless prevention. And finally, with the Supreme Court ruling on campaign finance reform and the ruling that they've made about corporations, I've talked with county council, we will have to change our campaign finance ordinance. Supervisor Long and I wrote that years ago, and we're going to come, within two weeks, we'll come with our modifications. We'll certainly run all those by county council to make sure that they're consistent.
Well, we can just get rid of the whole thing, it'd be great. That's great. The court is doing our work for us, that's okay.
That'll be, that'll be an interesting debate when that comes forward. And I would edit, I would editorialize, and I know you're supportive of getting rid of the campaign finance law, I would editorialize just the opposite. I think we're going back to the days of the, of the robber barons at the turn of the century. I think it's, I find it, I find it very interesting that we can't pass healthcare reform because you need, you can't do it with just a simple majority, but a 5-4 vote of the Supreme Court has just launched us into a whole new era in terms of campaign spending and campaign finance reform. So thank you very much, and with that off.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to stop our board comments because we have a room full of, of young men who really want to get back to school. So we're going to go to our 9:30 time certain and then come back to board comments. And thank you Supervisor Bennett for your comments, and again, to the public speakers. And we'll go to our 9:30 now, and Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. As a warrior mother of four warriors from Westlake High School, it's particularly pleasing to be able to celebrate the win of the Westlake High School varsity football team in the CF, CIS Southern Division. And we have a stack of certificates for all of you. Make sure you put that on your college applications, that you, you receive this from the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And I have a resolution that I want to read and honor your coaches, as well as the players who really have put out their all, and it's so nice to have that success. It says, "Whereas the Westlake High School varsity football team reclaimed the Marmonti League championship in 2009 after playing a perfect 10-0 season. And whereas the Westlake High School varsity football team has now captured the Marmonti League championship for the sixth time in this decade, in a decade. And whereas the achievements of the Westlake High School Warriors football program exemplify the values of dedication, discipline, and the pursuit of excellence. And whereas the varsity team's victories throughout 2009 season highlight, in particular, the generous camaraderie and strong teamwork of the 55 players under head coach Jim Benkert, who became known as the Warrior Band of Brothers. And whereas the Westlake High School Warriors football program is successful in helping to build better citizens of our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the excellence of the Westlake High School football program." And it was particularly exciting here at the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Foy, who represents Moore Park, who you were able to beat. And I had a little bet as who would win, and I won, and I'm waiting for my avocado or avocado trees. I bet an oak tree, but we can keep the oaks and Thousand Oaks. I'm going to come down there, if your coach would like to come up, and we'll present this to you and hear some good words from him. Congratulations, so happy for you. If you'd like to put the microphone here and say a few words about your wonderful team and your great work.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for having us here this morning, to the Board of Supervisors. We've also have our principal, Mr. Ron Lapari, is here in the back.
Hi, Mr. Lapari.
And our head of secondary education, Dr. Jeff Davis, in the back also. It was a fantastic ride, you know, to actually meet Moore Park in the Marmonti League title game, and to be victorious, and then head into the playoffs, and then to have such a tremendous outpouring of support from the community, 10,000 people at Simi Valley High School, to watch not only these tremendous young men, but also the tremendous young men at Moore Park High School to compete and really do everything they can to support their schools and their programs. And it was just a tremendous game. And I think I've said it many times, but the highlight of the, of the game is, we were, we were down 10 to 7 with seven minutes to play, and we got the ball at our own 12-yard line. And our starting quarterback, and our all-CIF quarterback, you know, had, had a tremendous season for us. He had broke his collarbone in the third quarter, and so we had a freshman quarterback come into the football game to, with the game on the line with seven minutes to play and 86 yards to go, and, and he used every bit of that clock, and we ended up going down to the 2-yard line, and it was fourth and, fourth and one from the 2-yard line with a minute left in the football game. And it was one of those things, as a coach, you know, what do you do? Do you kick to, to send the thing to overtime? You know, how, how do you, how do you play this thing? And, and we had a little time because there was a measurement down there, and, and Justin Moore, our freshman quarterback, came over. He hadn't played in a football game in six weeks, and came over to the sidelines, and we were trying to figure out what the next play was going to be, and it was really, you know, everything was happening so quickly, and trying to make a decision on whether we're going to kick, whether we're going to go for it. And Justin said, just let's run zone keep. I said, okay, that's a, that's a good thought. So off they went out into the, to the, to the game, and, and they ran zone keep. And Justin, our freshman quarterback, who had an opportunity to play because our starting quarterback had gotten us to that game, faked the handoff, kept the ball round around left end, and scored the touchdown. That ended up being the, the margin of victory. It wasn't done yet, there were still seconds left, and, and Johnny Stewart recovered a fumble, and, and we ended up winning the football game. But I just think that was, that was our season. We say we're the Band of Brothers, and we make, you know, these kids vowed to make choices, good choices amongst one, one another, and, and be part of, of a program that's bigger than themselves. And I think that's what happened. We don't have any superstars from a standpoint of, you know, guys that are going to USC or UCLA or any of those big programs. It's just a group of guys that are dedicated for six months to, to achieve this goal. And it's, it was especially gratifying, gratifying for me because this is a team that nobody really expected to do too much. I mean, we were rated number third or fourth in our league, and to win the league and then go on to win a CIF title, I think, especially in some of the games that we played against Moore Park, which is an excellent football team, and St. Bonaventure, which has been dominant in this area, to beat those two teams in the last two games, it was just really, really satisfying for, for our program and for our kids. So I thank you very much for, for taking this time to, to honor these kids because they really do deserve it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have a pile of certificates. You want to show, well, one for everybody? And I don't want to take up the board's time because we have a lot, but we have our certificates. We can get the head coaches. Jim, would you like to come here? I want to get you yours, and if you could just hold up that pile. That pile. Or this pile. The heavy pile. Coach Rich Pong?
I don't know.
Okay, well, let me, again, I'll present these to you, and then maybe some strong guy can carry these, you know.
Dave, you come here.
And we'll get you handed out. But I would like, if we could try to get a photograph of everyone together here in the boardroom, if you can all kind of come here and squish together, we'll see if we can get a photo.
Uh, no.
Yeah.
She wants some of them dropped off? Do you want some of them to go off top, or just all down?
I think if we do, right here.
Okay.
Yeah. How guys go back? One more, sorry. All right. All right. Thank you all for coming, so much appreciated. I'm wearing tie. All right. All right. Congratulations, and my, I'm Roberta.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all, thank you coaches.
You're alchemics.
Appreciate you coming in. They beat Bonaventure, Steve?
No.
Oh, I need coffee. Linda, thank you, that was fun.
That was so nice that they came.
I wanted to see the freshman boy, he's got a future, huh?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
You got the coach that came around and said some good things.
Yeah, he did say some good things, yeah.
And some of the coaches that are dead for some kids.
Yeah, they sure will, yeah.
And the leadership goes on to, to go on to the block.
Pretty remarkable. Yeah. Great. That was fun, thank you. Okay, back to board comments. Supervisor Zaragoza, you're up.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. You know, I just want to share with you that I attended several events the last week, and one was the Ventania de Salud, which is, in, in English means a health window program that the Mexican consulate in Oxnard put together. It's designed to help the Mexican nationals to receive basic health care, and all paid by the Mexican government. And this is by four legal individuals that are here in, in the United States. We met Dr. Cordova Mielobos, who was the Secretary of Health from Mexico, who came over to, to Oxnard and also through, through the three counties here in Santa Barbara and also San Luis Obispo. And also gave us a, in fact, to Mike Powers, a check of $35,000, you know, to help towards the, the work here in Ventura County. So this is going to help the immigrants that are here to get information in English, Spanish, and Mestico. So I want to thank Michael Powers for doing an excellent job, and Barry Zimmerman, and also Bob Gonzalez and Dr. Cervantes, who were there also for, for doing an excellent job, you know, for the community. This is not costing us any money, but it's helping, you know, the nationals pick up health care that helps us eliminate costs here in Ventura County. So it was a great program. I also attended a ground recovery and treatment program over in Oxnard. The great program continues there in the city of Oxnard, and the city of Oxnard received $20 million from, the stimulus monies from, and Lois Caps was very involved in that and helped, is helping the city of Oxnard in the projected water supply for the- also Bob Gonzalez and Dr. Cervantes, who were there also for doing an excellent job, you know, for the community. This is not costing us any money, but it's helping, you know, the nationals pick up health care that helps us eliminate costs here in Ventura County. So it was a great program. I also attended a ground recovery and treatment program over in Oaxtrate. The great program continues there in the city of Oaxtrate, and the city of Oaxtrate received $20 million from the stimulus monies from, and Lois Capes was very involved in that, and helped, is helping the city of Oaxtrate in the projected water supply for the next 20 years. Also, I attended the combined VSCDA, EDCVC ceremonies over in Camarillo the other day for the installation of new officers, and it was a great program, you know, and they're looking, again, you know, to hopefully provide more jobs for Ventura County. In addition to that, I also attended the Orman Beach Task Force, and Norma Camacho gave an excellent presentation, and our watershed folks also, on the Oaxtrate drain and also the J Street drain, and some information on the breach, you know, that happened over at Orman Beach. And also additionally, you know, I met with Mr. Hank Lecayo, Commissioner of the California Area Agency Commission. We're putting a senior summit together, hopefully sometime this summer, in bilingual for the city of Oaxtrate and the 5th District. And I'd just like to share with you that I attended Supervisor Long's summit over in Camarillo, so that's gonna help us tremendously in putting the summit together for our seniors in Oaxtrate.
Supervisor Parks.
I'm sorry, Parks. Did I say Long? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know who I met. Linda Parks. But anyway, we had a very, very busy week, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Foy.
She's last. Okay, well, thank you. I too wanna also adjourn in memory of the people on this list. We talked, I think, a few weeks back in regards to some of the water rate issue that was happening, and so as I said, I wanna try to hold off and let people get an understanding of what's going on, and so we have some town meetings held coming up. First one's on February 9th, letting people understand. And I appreciate what Reddy is doing, all the hard work he's doing, trying to work on that, the fines and all the other stuff that are coming down in those districts, and trying to work with Metropolitan to make sure that we don't just get stuck with the fine. We, in one sense, earn it first if we, people do not conserve and do the right thing. So I appreciate what he is, what he's doing in that area. I myself, that's about all I have, and I am glad we all survived the rain. The county did well during that time compared to other counties. That was very good. We have a little bit more coming, I think, by the time we get out of this meeting today. So that's all my comments.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I first would like to start in asking that we close in honor of these people on my list, and I'd like to call out a few of them. Dr. Ira Goldberg, who was a chemistry and physics teacher at a CLU, a scholar and resident at UCLA, now he will be much missed. As will a 5th grade teacher of the newly-formed Earth Magnet School Elementary School in Thousand Oaks. She also taught before that at Glenwood Elementary School, Rosemary Ann McManama, as well as the mother of Cassandra Arbok, a very strong advocate in our community, Margada Kent Egenberger, also died. And then I also want to pay particular recognition to the mother of Nora Aducas, who is our Planning Commissioner. I also wanted to comment on a couple of things over the last week. We had a volunteer church group, is offering to bring in over 100 people to plant trees at Santa Rosa Park, so we're really looking forward to putting that together. Also attended, I know we had someone speaking about mentally ill seniors, and I do attend the Mental Health Board meetings, and had one yesterday, and had just a wonderful summary of a program that is out there helping severely mentally ill people, and seeing how they are no longer needing to go to locked mental facilities, and just really seeing those outcomes that I think will be really helpful for the board to hear about, too. I appreciate that Council Supervisor Zaragoza is looking at doing a senior summit in Spanish. I think that's wonderful. That's something that I think is needed out there, and having a bilingual senior summit, I will certainly have to attend that, and kudos to you for that. Also attended an ELCS event where we were awarding law enforcement and firefighters of the year, and it reminded me of your award ceremony for your ELCS, where they had, I think, a criminal out in the parking lot when you had all the police officers inside. So we didn't have as much fun, but it was a great event. And then also looking at the campaign ordinances, looking forward to some changes in it. I think that there are things that we can do to ours, knowing that we'll have less control over independent expenditures, corporate money in campaigns, and that, to me, is a real setback for the United States, for federal, state, and local government, because we try so hard to keep even playing fields and not see the balance go towards those with the most money. And so I look forward to that change that we all make, and I think there are things that we can do to at least let people know who's funding those campaigns. Looking forward to that, and with that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Okay, my comments, quickly here, we have, I have a list to adjourn in memory. Camarillo resident Raymond Proust, who was a World War II United States Navy veteran. And Port Rennimi resident Paul Leon Ekin, who is a Korean War United States Navy veteran. And then lastly, for Camarillo, David Daniel Stewart, who is the founder of our Growing Grounds Nursery in Camarillo, and certainly all will be missed by the community. And in reference to the article on the homeless, and certainly agree with Supervisor Bennett's comments on that, that we are going to be so challenged with resources over this next year and probably the next five years. Today is the homeless count, so we've got good people, good volunteers out there now trying to get a real-time count on what we have in the population who are living on our streets, and our alleys, and our cars, and our watersheds. And it'll be valuable information for us. And also, just a quick comment on the rains. Certainly, we appreciated the rains, appreciated that it'll help us with our drought conditions. Doesn't mean we're out of the drought yet, but truly appreciate water resources, our transportation folks. As we dealt with rain here in the flatlands, they dealt with snow up in the hills and up in Lockwood Valley, and our staff was very challenged, and they did an outstanding job. And we did get through this last round of rain with very, very little challenges and damages, so fortunate. I also would like to comment that yesterday at the Community Commission, we had a brief presentation from David Rodriguez, who is heading up our local census count effort, and I've asked him to come and do a presentation to the board on a future agenda. But just some quick things for anyone who might be listening, they are hiring, and although it's just a, perhaps a three-month gig, they are still hiring, and they start anywhere from $12 to $15 an hour, and they need census folks to help do the count and work with the community on the census count, anywhere from 500 to 700 people. And if you're interested, you can call 277-2040. There will be 35 to 40 locations that will be opened up throughout our county, kind of like the H&R Block model, that will provide access to people to go in for the census count, get assistance. And in the 2000 census count, there was a 76% response. They're shooting this time for an 80% response. 4% may not sound like a lot, but when you, and this was said, 1% of the count in our community, or maybe in the state, equals the entire state of Wyoming. But more importantly, what it means to us in resources is it's $1,400 a person, and you multiply that times 10 years, and that adds up to some bucks that we can all use for local resources. So I will be asking, I have already asked him to come, and we'll coordinate with CEO's office to have him come to the board and do a public presentation on the census, and what the needs are, what the value is, and move ahead on that. And lastly, I'll provide to the board the 2009 Annual Report of the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance. I think, one, I'm very proud of the work that the alliance does. I think that all of us being a part of that alliance, the goals are certainly for conservation, for looking at the public education pieces, to helping our businesses with retrofit. The county has benefited greatly from the work of the Regional Energy Alliance, and we have a contract now that has been renegotiated with our utility partners who help fund the alliance, and that's certainly Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas Company. And we have lots of work still in front of us, but I hope you appreciate the report. And that concludes my public comments. Mr. Zaragoza, you have something else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to also adjourn in memory of the individuals on this list.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to do the same thing, ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd like to call out Valerie Clark, who, 27 years working at the Ventura County Medical Center, and served the community in many ways, and Marilyn Jo Pew, a teacher at junior high up. Go off.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, we have a few minutes here. If we could move to the regular agenda before our 10 o'clock, and Item 39, which is our Human Services Agency item. Good morning, Mr. Zimmerman.
Morning, Chair Long, members of the board. Mr. Robinson, I'm Barry Zimmerman, the Human Services Agency, which before you today are four contract awards that we would like approved. All the funding associated with all these various contracts are either federal monies through the Ara grants that we've been receiving, or temporary funding from the feds as far as TANF funding, as well as state trust funds and so forth. So no general fund is required for any of these items. But let me briefly go over the four contracts. We have two contracts that are being proposed to be awarded to Goodwill Industries for employment activity. One of them would be concentrated 100% for CalWorks recipients, in which it would be work experience, paid work experience, in which they would basically have internships in both private and public employers, and that would cover about 424 individuals is what we're targeting there. The second contract is also an employment contract with Goodwill Industries, and this happens to be with workforce investment dollars. Additional funds have been allocated down to us that have to be spent in a fairly short time period, and we propose also to do work experience for those that have gone through our training programs with workforce investment dollars, and now need a complimentary work experience to get the base and get them eligible for long-term employment. And about 50 individuals would go through that program there. Shifting gears a little bit, is proposed here to award a contract to Spirit Net to expand parental counseling for preventive and family counseling for preventative efforts with child abuse and neglect. These are individuals that aren't necessarily in our system, but have been referred and do have an association with us. But this contract will have professionals going into the homes and counseling with these families to remedy issues so that circumstances don't deteriorate greater in which that they might find themselves further in our system. It's a preventative model and very successful. The fourth contract is also, has to do with food share in augmenting some of the needs with those that are on CalWorks. With a federal program called Emergency Contingency Funding that came down along with the Ara Grants, allows us to basically multiply some of our funding that we have in the CalWorks program. With CalWorks, we can supply these types of supportive services. Now with the complimentary TANF money coming in, it basically, it grows it four times, and so we're able to leverage it four times. In this case, we're able to now work with food share and to supplement some of the basic needs for families at a much greater rate and a much more expansive program. It is proposed that food share would provide basic staples for a family of four in food boxes is what they would be in giving and augmenting families that are running short in meeting their needs, and estimate about five months with about 36,000 boxes is what we'd go through.
Barry, is that food, is that a weekly allocation?
That's a month.
A monthly allocation?
It would be a monthly allocation, but it's staple items, like canned items like rice, these type things that would augment the making of foods.
It can last for the month.
That would last for that time period there. This is a little bit unique, this grant. We are heavily dependent on the federal government to approve an application, a statewide application, in order to receive these funds. We have it, like the Goodwill Industry ones, is the same model. We have that approved by the federal government through our statewide application, and so we have that money, and we're starting to roll out the contract. With our non-reoccurring expenses, such with food share and other programs, the federal government has not approved the state's application, but we're working towards that, and hopefully gonna get all our contracts in place with anticipation that when we do receive it, we're ready to go. All the funding associated with the Ara is time-limited, and is high expectation of performance within a five-to-seven month period, and so we're trying to get these rolled out as quick as possible at this point in time. If you have any questions, that was kind of a quick overview of four diverse contracts.
Further questions?
Yeah, I just wanna compliment you. It says here, 36,000 food boxes are gonna be out.
That would be over the five-month period.
I mean, that's a tremendous amount of food.
Yeah, that's a great, great operation. Food Share has that organized for us, and has come forth with that model.
And I think it's great because that helps, you know, with the savings money for utilities or other, you know, necessities that a family needs.
Absolutely. And these would be for CalWorks families. CalWorks family in general, just to give you a perspective, CalWorks family on aid, if they qualify, is about average right now, about $503 a month, which is not quite enough to probably meet all the basic needs of a family, and so this will be a supplement that will be very beneficial.
It'll help.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Other questions? Supervisor Foy.
Great. Looking at these, the work program, this assistance or the employment, and it gave, I mean, it says at least 70% of the people need to complete the work and all that stuff. That's their requirements. How do we usually do on these things? Do we usually make these requirements?
Yeah, we usually exceed that by quite a bit. If a week ago or so, we came with our WIA performance measures.
Most of those are pretty good.
And we were around 85-plus, 85 to 90% is our success rate in these. The minimum standard that they have is 70%, and that's why you see that.
And when they, like a lot of this work experience that they get, these work, I mean, does this work experience really translate into some really good work experience that they can go into the private sector and get a job?
Absolutely. We, in our own agency, we run a number of people through ours, giving them office-type work experiences and so forth. Many of them transition actually into other county jobs that they've acquired due to that experience, and as well as private sector jobs. The anticipation here, working through Goodwill, is to have them placed in these internships, and hopefully that after the period of time that they're there, that they'll continue on in the employment in the private sector.
So, 'cause a lot of times you look at some of the government programs, they're not really successful, but what you're saying, the taxpayers that are putting this kind of money up federally and statewide, they're really getting some, a good bang for the buck on what comes out of this.
Absolutely. It's both a benefit for us, for the individual who we're serving that side, as well as the employment community, whether it's public or private.
Great, great. I appreciate that, thank you.
Supervisor Foy.
This all sounds like wonderful programs. You didn't speak much about the home visitation for families that are suspected of child Obviously, this is very much needed to help prevent child abuse, and are you seeing this as an enhancement to existing programs?
Yeah, this is consistent with, when I talked a little bit while back on the pathway strategies and differential response, in which that we're trying to focus in preventative measures so we can de-escalate a crisis in a family prior to great neglect or cause to go in there and actually intervene and remove children and so forth. So this is right along with our strategies. It's one, a very effective model to get in there early to help a family in crisis, and they have different modules to help them sort through the, from behavioral problems to how to deal with, you know, counseling, working with the child, how to work with medical community if they have special needs, and these type things, in order to address the safety, and how to maintain really a harmonious family environment. And so, yes, this is a great emphasis and a great focus for us. The, you know, it is common when we get a referral and it's unsubstantiated, and no services are provided to that family, about three-quarters of them will return and return back to our system as a re-referral. And so this model will help eliminate that, and we're measuring that, limiting, trying to limit the recurrence of referrals, so it is very important for us.
And working with the families, working with the parents, and particularly, as I understand, new case law is showing it's
strategies and differential response, in which that we're trying to focus in preventative measures so we can de-escalate a crisis in a family prior to great neglect or cause to go in there and actually intervene and remove children and so forth. So this is right along with our strategies. It's one, a very effective model to get in there early to help a family in crisis. And they have different modules to help them sort through the, from behavioral problems to how to deal with, you know, counseling, working with the child, how to work with medical community if they have special needs and these type things in order to address the safety and how to maintain really a harmonious family environment. And so, yes, this is a great emphasis and a great focus for us. The, you know, it is common when we get a referral and it's unsubstantiated and no services are provided to that family, about three-quarters of them will return and return back to our system as a re-referral. And so this model will help eliminate that, and we're measuring that, limiting, trying to limit the recurrence of referrals. So it is very important for us.
And working with the families, working with the parents, and particularly, as I understand, new case law is showing it's more difficult for the county to intervene in some of those. So having, you know, at the beginning, being able to get into the home and try to assist and to monitor, I think is really important.
That's right. And these are families that have been identified. It is a voluntary program, so we do have willing participants, which make that all even more successful. Yes, very much so.
Yeah, they're all great programs, the food programs.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, pleasure to the board. There's a motion and a second. And we will now vote. I think those are all very good contracts and certainly needed and worthy programs. And that passes unanimously. Thank you for the good work on that. Appreciate it. All right, board members, it is now little after 10:00. We'll go to our 10 o'clock time certain items, if we could. And the first one is item 30, and it's a report on our investments. And good morning, Mr. Hanson.
Good morning. Bob Hanson, Chief Investment Officer. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Jim and his Westlake team and the Moore Park team. Fantastic football programs. For those of you that don't know it, I was a football coach in Santa Barbara. And I found out quickly how many great high schools there are in Ventura County. Santa Paula, Fillmore, some of the ones I played, Nordoff, fantastic school, Santa Clara, St. Bonaventure, great schools and coaches that really had the number-one agenda of making boys into men. I really like player-coaches.
What was your one loss record?
It was really good against St. Bonaventure until they got Lorenzo Booker. He's enough to make me retire. But there were some long rides home, but some happy rides. But great, great high schools and great football programs in Ventura. Well, as you can see, from November to December, the rates are dropping, as I had anticipated. And I look for January really to remain about the same as December. On the yield curve, one year now would be .33, two years would be 1.05, and three years a 1.53. So there's not a lot of yield out there. Regarding the Fed raising rates, which of course I would like to see selfishly, I don't really see it until next year. It could even be the middle of next year. So we're going to have to live with these rates. I do notice that LAEF came in about .57 for December. So they're having their problems also, and they're a very good program and have a lot of qualified people. We're balancing the agencies out between each agency as best as I can. The only commercial paper we buy is Chevron, which probably has more money than the U.S. government, and General Electric. And I see their earnings were up last Friday, and the stock was up. And really, the only losses they have are commercial real estate losses. But they're in a situation where they buy and hold, so they don't have to sell, there's no forced sale, they can just ride out the real estate. So they're in very good shape. If you want to know exactly how good in shape they are, they have $63 billion that they could put their hands on tomorrow, which means it's in a one-day repo investment. Repo meaning collateralized loan against government securities. They have $52 billion in unused bank lines, and their commercial paper total is only $47 billion. So they really are cash solid. They're A1 plus P1, so I feel comfortable investing in them. There's really so little to invest in nowadays that where their name hasn't been in the news or will be in the news. A quick note on your board approving the remodel for the treasury. I just want to tell you, absolutely fantastic. It is so much more productive and conducive to an investment treasury environment. I'm convinced that some of the things that were put in will help me even earn higher yields just because of the information highway. And two names that jump out at me, and I met so many people and found out how great the county team is, having not been in on a remodel, all of a sudden, all these people come in. You know, ISD and GSA and Tri-County Furniture, who is not part of us, but we use them. And it was really tremendous. But Sam Jamshita, who led the team, did a fantastic job. And Ethan, up in the control tower, came by and gave me some good ideas for technology that I implemented. And a quick story on Ethan, he came in and I introduced myself to all these people. And I said, "Hi, I'm Bob Hanson." And he said, "Oh, I know who you are." And I said, "Oh, how do you know that?" He said, "Well, I'm up in the control booth." And then he said, "You know, and I really think you give a good presentation. It's really understandable." And that's when I said, "What was your name?" Anyway, and finally, I have two of my associates with me today. Don Hanson, the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, and my newest associate, since I've lost one person in retirement and going to lose another one, which amounts to my right and left hand, Bertha Lopez. So they're both here. The good news is, they're the two members in my fan club. The bad news is, they're the only members. Anyway, that's, any questions? Otherwise, I'll see you next month.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just one. Bob, you and I have talked some in the past, and I've asked you, just like to get an update on federal home loan bank, certainly questions. By comparison to five years ago, there are more concerns out there with our home loan bank. And what's your update in the last two months? You talked to us, I think, right before the holidays. Any change in status, anything that makes you?
Well, I watched the Postal Authority, gosh, it's been so many years, I can't remember. They went into trouble and they had to issue some bonds. But these are enacted by Congress, as I've mentioned before. These are federal agencies. They've had accounting problems, obviously, they, other than the FICB or the Farm Credit Bank, their agriculture, the rest are all involved in loans. So you're going to constantly see them in the news because of some of the things that happen. So they're going to have losses, they're going to have gains. But I get back to, they are an agency of the federal government. And if the government, who has bailed out numerous private companies, as we hear every day, could really not afford to let a federal agency go under, because the credit rating of U.S. Treasuries, which has been in question, you hear it every now and then, I don't think it's a question. They're still by far the number-one security in the country, in the world. But the, if we had agencies go under, that might make the rating agencies thinking in a frame of mind that might make us a double-A instead of triple-A in treasuries or in ratings. So I really don't think, even though you're going to read a lot of stuff in the paper, mainly which was accounting problems and situations like that, I don't think we have anything to worry about because they really are the pillars of our government. Other than U.S. Treasury securities, which are being bought up to the tune of a one-month T-bill now, is .01. That is on an annual basis, one one-hundredth of 1%. So I know what you read in the paper, and every time I see it, I go. But I have no doubt in my mind, unless you're worried about this form of government, that those agencies are in any trouble. The other question is, as I said last time, there really aren't any other options other than to go into treasuries, and even a two-year treasury now is .82.
Sure. I realize the options are limited and all of that. Do you have the ability to examine what their loan portfolio is in terms of the loans that they're making to people who are not putting anything down or putting marginal, they have marginal credit ratings? You know, how the subprime stuff was out there. Do you have the ability to analyze a federal home loan bank's portfolio?
I definitely don't have the ability to analyze, but I have the ability to ask a lot of people who are very knowledgeable for the answer to that question. And next time, I will have an answer for you.
But I don't think, Madam Chair, I don't think there's any zero down anymore, except for maybe VA loans, right? But I don't think there is. You know, just.
To me, I'm looking at yield and maturity, and I do feel comfortable with the federal agencies. But I, you know, every now and then, the media, which we all know what it makes for a good article, and they do have problems. Fannie Mae had some tremendous problems. They fired the head of Fannie Mae. They admitted, "We have accounting problems." L.A. County and myself stopped buying Fannie Mae, so. But not from a credit basis, but a message to say, "Get your books in order."
Other questions?
I'm going to second that. I thought you were going to talk about the Toyota stock too, you know.
Well, you know.
I didn't see anything about Toyota.
Yeah. Well, Toyota's funny. But I did hear a statistic on Toyota, and since I drive back and forth from Santa Barbara every day in a Toyota, which is now over 200,000 miles, 80% of the Toyotas that have been sold in the last 20 years are still on the road. That's really incredible.
Pretty strong.
But I'm still not buying a paper.
Any other questions?
I do agree that we're probably not going to see any interest rates. You think about what the government came out today, and we said we're $1.4 trillion in our budget deficit this year coming up. And you think about it, and on the 12 trillion we got in debt, we're only paying a minimal interest because interest rates are so low. So you could imagine what that would do if interest rates went to 5% or 6% and the government's paying 4% or 5% interest, what, half, another half a trillion dollars would be paying in interest. So I agree with you. I don't see anything in the future of us making a whole lot more money on this in regards to where these interest rates are going for at least a year or more.
I agree. And also, you've got this question out there that if you start raising rates, does that kill the recovery? And then if all of a sudden we see bad numbers, you know, Bernanke's going to, it's the closest foe that I've seen, he's got about 50% right now. But if you do anything to hurt the recovery, my gosh, you're going to hear nothing about the Fed that's good. So they're going to be very slow because the recovery is so important to this country. And raising rates would, we all know the effects of that. It helps me with this, but then for the borrowers, of course, mortgage rates go up and consumer rates go up, credit card rates go up.
Supervisor Ford?
It all seems rather pessimistic, but probably realistic. But you're anticipating our yield to continue to drop, I would, is that correct?
I am, just because our longest maturity is three years, and they keep, every time I have a four-and-a-half maturity or a 5% coupon come due, I just almost don't want to release it. I want to keep it, but we have to cash it in on maturity, and then I replace it with a 1.25.
It does seem like in the electronics business, it's starting to rebound a bit.
Mm-hmm. I think we're headed in the right direction. It was a big move down, and it's not going to be what we call a moonshot up. It's going to be, at best, a 45-degree angle. We went through unprecedented times, and there's no way that you can recover quickly.
Okay, board members, items before us. There's a motion and a second, receive and file. Please vote.
See you next month.
As always, a very thorough report. That was for item, that was for item 30. Supervisor Bennett. And that's a unanimous receive and file. Item 3031, which shows that we have a portfolio yield a little lower in December, but same information, basically. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, and I would think that that yield in December should be, I ran the numbers on the 22nd, and it was 1.69. So it looks like we should stay around this level for a while. But unfortunately, securities mature and you have to replace them. If rates start going up, then that's a good thing. But right now, it does look like the trend is down. And as I said, as good as LAEF is, and they're good, they're only earning, and we don't compare ourselves to them because they can do a lot more things that we can't do. Their December rate was .57, and I only point that out to let you know there's only so much you can do. And actually, I have some money in LAEF right now, which is more or less my cash account because 24 hours' notice, I can get it back. And probably this week, we'll spend $150 million, the schools payroll and some bills we owe the state, and different things like our payroll, which is pretty important to all of us, so.
Yeah, they do. That's our next item. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Motion, second, to receive and file that report. Please vote. Thank you, as always. Appreciate the work. Thank you.
See you next week. Next month.
All right. Next up, board members, our time certain is item 32, and it is my item that I've asked to bring forward to the board. And to let you know that this is being brought forward, there are, this is a report produced by the Urban County Caucus, and this was produced representing all 12 counties. San Francisco has presented their information. It's not in this report at this moment, but will be released today. That will complete all 12 counties. And it was asked by urban counties that we all present this to our boards today so that the information goes out statewide. And the main messages of this report is really to look at what historically has occurred with our counties, with the urban counties, and our relationship with the state. The county administers state programs as partners with the state, and this shows that this partnership has been hurt due to the fact that counties are carrying a significant burden of the cost for administering state programs. We are the critical safety net, as all of you know. We are underfunded, and the budget system needs to be restructured in the relationship between us and our quote partners. Our counties need to have continued flexibility to operate mandated programs and to work with the state to provide needed services to our constituents. And this is really information for the public to understand that when we have to make very tough decisions yet in front of us, that those decisions are so much driven by the state and clearly do impact our ability to maintain basic services. It shows again that we have been underfunded and that the relationship is not working. So we're going to, I've got just a few bullet points here, PowerPoint. Yeah, that finding ones, you have this in front of you. You have both the full PowerPoint presentation and the report. And so I'm not going to read all this to you, trust me. And ask that, we just, you read it at your leisure, and you certainly will, as this comes, as our budget comes forward and we continue the discussions with the relationship and the state, that we all have an opportunity to use this information. The Urban County Caucus, as I said, we, it was surveyed and this report was developed, and you'll see the highlights on it. And if we'll move to the next. And Lauren, thank you for helping with this. Key observations here, you've got six major health and human services agencies or services that were looked at, transportation corrections, and they account for over $10.6 billion in county spending annually. And these, again, are state figures, but you can see, and I do have, I also have the information that we were asked to provide to give input for this report, and I have our local information of the percentage of dollars that we have also expended over, or have in our budgets over the last same fiscal periods. So in the key observations of this particular slide, you can see, again, the six programs, including transportation, and that the programs are all fully funded by a combination of state, federal, and local funding. Next. Here we have the federal and state support for those six programs, and that has steadily decreased over time, while county responsibilities have increased. And just so you know, on the bars, where the hash marks are, that's just for ease of not having the hash marks go to the ceiling, not having the bars go to the ceiling. But the important piece on this is that in '04-'05, 87.8% of the programs' contributions were supported from state and federal programs. And in '09-'10, the level of support is 14.1%. I'm going back up to the first, I'm sorry, '04-'05, you see, it was 12.2% of program support from federal dollars. And now we have, the county sheriff's support has increased since that time. And now we have, the county share of support has increased since that time, and the level of support is now, 14.1% of county dollars are used to support these programs. And the federal-state share is down to 85.9, when it was 87.8. The current county share still seems small in absolute terms, but it has increased the relative burden to both our system and the impact to our constituents that we serve. Okay, next. I lost my page here. On this one, we again show where local government has grown at twice the rate of that for the federal and state governments. And this is looking at the compounded annual growth rate of federal-state support, and 2.8%. And by contrast, our county support has grown from $1 billion annually to $1.5 billion over the same time period. And this increase represents a much higher county compounded annual growth rate at 5.7%. And this is, the next chart shows that the six programs, support for the six programs is anemic when compared to a handful of California socioeconomic indicators. You have the county share, the federal-state share, the GSP, the inflation and population. And this is, shows again that there has been a 3% compounded annual growth of federal-state program support that translates into increased funding. But the growth in that support is only favorable to 6% population in California growth, and it only is tracked, again, through the gross national product with the growth of inflation in the total picture here. The level of county spendings on these programs, the bottom line, the level of county spendings on these programs over the past six years is a total of 40%, and that's what impacts our residents at the local level.
Increased by 40%.
Increased by 40%, correct. The next one, total funding per caseload, adjusting for inflation, the total contributions per caseload has decreased for four of the programs over the last six years. Between '04-'05 to '09-'10, CalWorks contributions dropped from seven point, well, seven, the dollar figures there, per caseload, which was 7,400 per caseload, to 6,200 per caseload. And Medi-Cal went from 910 to 892. It was only, the significant part here is that child welfare piece. Significant increase in contributions, and per caseload, the increase from 13,845 to 16, and that's, again, our cost. The child welfare program is a particular area where the federal and state government could take a larger role to help counties, and that's on that next one. And county support for CalWorks and Medi-Cal, although it's relatively small and has been stable over time, it still is, as we know, so integrated into the total work that we do with all the programs, and particularly when you look at the child welfare program. Its relative burden on the counties has increased again on the child welfare percentage, has gone from 14.4% to a 54% increase. And again, if you look at the figures of our local impacts, you can see the dollars that were, show that same increase. And then the final slide and charts, federal and state government can also help the counties with respect to transportation. And we've had this discussion with our VCTC agency, and we know that what has happened there is that the California legislatures occasionally withheld transportation-related appropriations or loaned itself transportation funding, and as we've heard, they're going to do that again. So the cost to residences is significant in the way of services and resources that we have to provide. We have been, there's been this slow chipping away and erosion of our ability to provide services, slipping and erosion of funds that are provided by the state. The county's financial contribution has increased by about 5.7% every year, compared with a 3% annual growth in federal and state contributions. So this, again, gives us a, I believe, some real figures independently pulled together from the 12 urban county caucuses and analyzed by the consulting team. The caseload growth with inflation shows that there's not enough to keep the real level of benefits needed for our recipients here at this, at the county. And there, it will continue to be an impact of that. And what we need to do, and what certainly Urban County Caucus is continuing to work on, is that relationship and to see what we can do to close the gap on that erosion, and to look at whether we need program redesign, whether we do, as we've talked about here, whether we look at a relationship where the state gives us greater flexibility in the programs and services to provide, so if they're going to continue to erode the dollars that we're able to at least keep our heads above water and provide services to constituents we serve. This, again, has gone out to all of the counties via their board action today, and although I have a recommended action to receive and file, I would like to ask a second recommendation be added, and that would be to send this full report to our state delegation, to our assembly and senate representatives that cover our counties, so they have the same information. I'd be happy to answer some questions. I'll let you know, this came across my desk on Monday, so I'm not an expert on all of the analysis of the report, but you have the full report to do further review, and certainly through Urban County Caucus, we can get questions answered by the consulting team who put the, pulled the data together. Questions?
Madam Chair, just want to thank you for an excellent report. You know, I read it last night. And again, as you mentioned, you know, the finding is that the federal government and state government should take a larger role in protecting our children. And with the very, very serious decline in funding of these programs, it's really crucial when, at the same time, you know, the cause to help our families and children has risen tremendously. I find that in the report, that was very prevalent. And the study also shows that the federal government should also take additional steps to help us in the transportation needs, you know, that we discussed, that we discussed at VCTC. So I think that those three points are very prevalent, and we need to have more funding from the state and the feds, you know, to continue these programs. But I think it's an excellent program, I mean, report, and I'm glad that all the 13 counties, urban counties are participating in this, which I think is something that the state and the feds need to, need to understand, that the programs that we have are expensive and mandated with no monies. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Other questions?
I don't have questions. I just, I think this just is another demonstration of the value that you bring to this board by your service with CSAC and the Urban County Caucus, and I know you spend tons of hours on conference calls to try to pull all this stuff off. But the, some important points made here, we're going to need a ton of education of the public even on this transfers. At some point in time, we have to get, I think, a real mindset change with the public about how do we go about financing government services in California. This is going to be one part of, one piece in that education campaign. So thank you very much.
It is complex, and the work that the UCC asked to have done was to try and put a picture on this. And even with the picture, it's still something you have to read and try to digest. And I know our teams out here through Human Services, of course, the most impacted agency, will be reviewing the Urban County Caucus information also and digesting.
And certainly the major point out there, the local governments are picking up a growing share while generally state and federal are capped or declining outside of child welfare, which is at least an encouraging area.
Right. And again, the final point, that if we continue on this path, we'll have a yearly erosion of 5.7% yearly.
And we're definitely seeing reductions and continuing reductions, as you point out, as the state budget worsens. And then additionally, we're seeing increased needs, so that is a double whammy. But I'm, I wonder, you know, and obviously it's a lot larger question, is what is it at the state beyond the economy that has, you know, resulted in such bad performance? And looking at, you know, when they stopped issuing checks and they had to take all the construction crews off and then bring them on again, that cost us, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to restage just for that, you know, period of time. We have on our agenda later on, our legislative platform, if there are things that we can look at to, you know, help avoid those kinds of things happening at the state level. A lot of things that we do are to protect our county finances and what we can do as a county, but we really, you know, need to put pressure on Sacramento, too, to see what, to avoid the kind of things that have led beyond the economy, but just the dysfunction of the state that have led us into this kind of situation.
Chair.
Yes.
I wanted to point out, Supervisor Bennett indicated that child welfare is doing better on these indicators.
Relatively.
Yeah, relatively, because we still increased, basically, counties increased 50% over that, their, our contribution over that same period of time. So when we look at the indicators, it's relatively better than the other ones, but the other ones are so dismal that it starts to make child welfare look good, and we've had a 50% increase in cost there. So, you know, none of them are really very attractive.
And I thank Mr. Dershowitz also for providing the local information into this report, and then also for the board to have it, to look at the comparisons. Okay, any other questions or comments? It is a receive and file action in addition to asking that we send this to our local state delegation, and that's my motion.
Second.
It's just kind of frustrating to just point out this is the result, you know, without pushing forward on some actions to, to correct it.
Well, I think we'll have lots of opportunity, both through our ledge platform and as we move through the continuing dialogue with Urban County Caucus and CSAC and state legislation. Absolutely.
And some of these measures on the ballot.
Mm-hmm, right. Please vote. And that passes, I thank you, board, that passes unanimously. And before we do that 1030, which is our ledge platform, can we take just a three-minute break, please? Is that all right? Yes, that's all right. (inaudible) I'm not eating it. I'm not brave. Okay, we need to come back to order here now. My three minutes slipped away from me. I know. All right, Board members, let's get back to business. And our next item is the long-awaited, item 33, our proposed state and federal legislative agenda and platforms. Ms. Hughes.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the Board, Mrs. Robinson. For the record, Sue Hughes, Legislative Analyst, County Mentor at the CEO's office. Yeah, I try and lay low when all possible. So, it's that time of year again. I'm before you with your Board's 2010 State and Federal Legislative Agenda and Platform. And before I get started, I'd like to thank all the county departments out there who helped with all of the submittals for all of this information. I don't know that there's any big surprises on this. Of course, I'm probably about to find out if there is, aren't I? I don't think there's any big surprises on either the state or the federal agenda or platform this year. You know, as has been the case for several years, we, we sort of look for state grant funding as opposed to singular funding out of state programs. Well, on the federal side, we are, we have a list of federal appropriations that we're seeking. And as I promised, all departments out there, I keep an eye on every opportunity there is. I hope to keep, to get some funding for other county programs that might not be listed on this federal agenda. So, I keep an eye out for those kinds of funding, funding opportunities as well. But based on the last couple of years, we are using the same categories, asking for funding, asking for new pieces of legislation to be introduced, and then the general principles and policies that your Board carries forward to make it possible for our legislative advocates in Sacramento and Washington, D.C., to more easily carry out your Board's platform and operate on a moment's notice if something is happening either in Sacramento or in Washington, D.C. And then, several times a year, I might be back with other issues that have not made it to the legislative program. So hopefully, we did a pretty good job this year of getting kind of inclusive on the information and the, the issues that are important to county government for 2010. I would like to point out, the Board letter does state some of our successes. While the state ones, successes are more based on legislation that was passed that was pertinent to the county. On the federal side, we were awarded several million dollars in federal appropriations for county projects that we just learned about, probably about a month ago, for the 2010 federal budget. And then, we can't not mention the fact that the county of Ventura, and I mean, the county as an entity, not the county as a geographic region, but the county of Ventura as an entity has received approximately $48 million in the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA, or stimulus funding. So, and that's spread from anywhere from, you know, A to Z, or airports to, okay, Public Works. It doesn't really go to Z, I don't think. So, we've gotten $48 million for a variety of different programs, with the bulk of that, when everybody talked about shovel-ready, about $35 million of that $48 million is going to Public Works departments and agencies to do all of those shovel-ready projects that we had out there. So, with an opportunity for either a, they sort of called it a stimulus two, but I think it's money that wasn't spent in a timely fashion in stimulus one, and we are keeping an eye on those opportunities too, to see, we're ready for projects and we'll happily take anybody's money that has it out there for us. So, again, I couldn't do this without your staff, their input, the input from county departments and their staff, and I appreciate the fact that they take the time to explain a program to me, because when you're working with all of these programs, you sometimes need the Reader's Digest version again to keep up to speed on what's happening. So I appreciate their help, and in case any of them are listening, the appropriations requests that you see on Attachment B, those forms are due to me no later than 5:00 Thursday afternoon and that. Yes, that is the drop dead deadline for those forms. So, I just appreciate being able to give that little advertisement. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have items that you'd like to call out, and if I can help answer any specific questions, I'm happy to do that, too.
Okay, let's start. Questions? Questions?
Throw laws edge in my throat here. No, I just want to, I just want to thank you for an excellent report, you know, and I did read that last night, and I, and thank you for the good work and all the department heads and agency heads and, and the electives. I have a question here on page two of the, of the Board letter.
Uh-huh.
On AB 566, the mobile home conversion bill by Assembly Pedro Manava. If this passes, you know, as, as written, it'll improve the local authority over the, to regulate mobile home land use issues. And I just want to make sure that, that is, we're going to support that, or that be part of the, the platform for the, for the, our agenda?
That bill did not go forward last year, and Assembly Member Nava has agreed to reintroduce the bill this session. So we'll see a reintroduction and a new bill number for that.
So that'll be in, okay. Then on page three, the, on the, let me see, the rent control, AB 761, that's a bill to eliminate that, is that correct? Am I reading that correctly? Yes, and I don't think that, that would really, is contrary to what we were trying to, to, to work with Nava.
That's why we've been following both of those pieces of legislation. That bill failed too, so we'll see what happens if that gets introduced again as well.
So we'll put a statement on that regarding that. Then on page, let me see, three again, AB 343, the military compact. I just want to thank, you know, the Board for, for that passed, you know, for, to help our military children, you know, afford at the same opportunity, education-wise, when they move from one school to the other, from one district to the other. I just want to thank the Board for that. And on page four and five, the ARA monies, I didn't see anything in there about the $8 million. Is that in the computer, that $8 million that, that we picked up for the El Rio sewer project, I think?
I left that off.
That's a really important, that's a, you know, that really-
Oh, I lumped it all into the Public Works, $35 million.
But that, that $8 million really helped the residents in, in El Rio lower their sewer rates from a hundred and some dollars, $125 a month, down to $62 a month, you know. So that's, you know, really important that we kind of pat ourselves on the back for that. And, let me see, oh, the other on page, let me see, A3, it says the, that we are supporting inspection stations, ag stations, is that between states and states and also the U.S. and Mexican border?
What happened, has happened in the past, and currently, all of those inspection stations between borders, whether it's hours in Mexico or hours in, say, Arizona, currently, they're all open. So when you drive through a state, you're stopped and asked if you're bringing across any fruit or vegetables.
They just wave you through.
But in the past, when the state budget has been really bad, they just shut all those stations down, which then, we can all understand, would have, you know, effects later on our ag industry. So, this is something that we're concerned that this may happen again, so we wanted to get it on here again to make sure that we are supporting those inspection stations staying open.
Okay, and then, of course, in the federally talk about, well, we talk about the enhancement of public safety, which I think is extremely important to all of us, get additional dollars and also for affordable housing and, and medical services that are extremely important to all of us. Just in general, I think it was a great, great policy issue that you put together for some platform. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Board members, other comments?
Yeah, before it was questions, a few comments. Number one, I note that, you know, right at the beginning of your state legislation of importance in 2009, you have listed Nava's bill, you have listed 761. This is a real ongoing threat to affordable housing here in Ventura County. I'm glad it's listed right here at the beginning. I think it's, needs to be sort of our number one legislative, you know, putting our pressure on those people in those mobile homes. If we're not out there fighting for them, they're going to be in real trouble when these conversions start to take place that are out there. And if AB 761 goes through, they'll really be in trouble even without the conversions that are there. I would like to point out, AB 392, the very one, next one after that's on page three of the report, it's a PURE bill, and that was for the funding for the long-term care ombudsman. That bill, which was the solution last year to the funding crisis for the senior, is only a one-year bill. And so the way this is worded, it says, you know, to help protect the health and safety of these residents for only one year, would need to be renewed. And so we're going to be right back here again this spring with how are we going to fund the senior ombudsman program again, because there's not a permanent fix. Now, interestingly, what they're doing is they're taking the fines for the, when these skilled facilities get fined, that's the money that they use for this. But they are not willing to just dedicate those fines every year so that this doesn't keep coming up as a, as an issue. What they ought to do, it seems to make common sense, is that the facilities, just like the meat packers pay a fee, and that pays for the inspection of the meat, these facilities that are being inspected, at least the fines from those facilities ought to go to fund the senior ombudsman program that, that is out there. So, I wanted to point that out. The number of, number of modifications and stuff that I feel good about in terms of the report, I have one that I, that we did not get to sue in advance, that I have passed out to the Board members for your consideration. And Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to wait and get through the comments on this and then do this, or if you want me to go into this at this point in time.
No worries, go ahead.
All right. And I'll read this into the record also. I'll give one to Roberta, just so you have it there if you'd like. But a modification to our legislative platform, and I recognize our legislative platform's pretty broad and sort of, many of these things are, you know, sort of statements of our position, so I, I don't expect some dramatic change at the state level by the immediate institution of this, but I, but I think it does help point us in the right direction, and the direction I think most citizens in Ventura County want us to go, which is support revisions to state law to enable local governments to balance preservation of agriculture and open space, water supply and other physical constraints, with housing production and meeting the state housing elements goal. Enable the counting of units produced through inclusionary housing in meeting housing needs, and recognize smart growth policies such as the Guidelines for Order of Development in allocating housing need. There's no, we're getting pushed from, from 16 different directions here on this. For example, with, you know, SB 375, we're being told we have to start to engage in much more smart growth planning here in Ventura County. We also need to make sure that the allocation of the housing recognizes that, so that if we do a smart growth partnership with a city or whatever, we can find some ways to share those allocations, some ways to somehow have this apply to the state fairly rigid standard that is out there. So, this is fairly vague, but it allows us to, you know, begin to, to try to, to address that topic, and that's what I'm trying to capture here, is that as we move forward with more and more pressure on, on greenhouse gas emissions, on smart growth development, on needs for us to think regionally about housing, et cetera, we need to have some flexibility introduced to what has been, up to this point in time, a fairly rigid sort of housing allocation program from the state. So that's what this is intended to try to do. Happy to have a conversation.
Okay. Let me go down here first.
My comment on that, you talk about enable the counting of units produced through inclusionary housing and meeting housing needs. I think it's a good idea. I also think that it would be good to put mobile home parks in there too, because I know some cities interpreted that you can't use mobile home parks as affordable housing. So, I think in the, I think where that they certainly have rent control, that would be a good addition in there too.
Okay. Certainly don't have a problem. How does, do you know, offhand, do you know how HCD looks at?
That's always- That's what I was going to-
Mobile home, mobile home housing?
I think mobile home is a separate issue.
I mean, as far as counting for the housing element?
I, I don't have the answer to that question.
I don't either.
Well, I, I know, for example, the city of Thousand Oaks said that they were not considered part of their mobile home stock, their affordable housing stock. And I think that is a good thing that they would be part of affordable housing stock because certainly there's a lot of people of low income living in them. So I think that, that would be good to ask for the state to consider this.
Ms. Hughes, do you know if they counted as-
I don't know the answer to that, but I think Christie's standing behind, sitting behind me.
Yeah, I was just looking at Christie because I know that for federal purposes, in fact, we've invested quite a bit in, in renovation of mobile homes and it certainly meets the requirements there. But the state for RONA purposes, I don't know.
That's what I was going to ask. Is this-
Well, we could certainly, my thought would be to add, add that language if you're agreement with it and then-
And then if the state already does, it's no harm.
Right.
And then the city should acknowledge it.
Is this for the RONA numbers? Is this what we, that we-
Housing element, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
And then if this is the appropriate time, I also have one that I shared with the board and have extra copies here for others who may want it, like our county council, if you want to pass that. And this is, and this is in line with something that the board actually already approved. But this would be a policy that, or a legislation that the county supports legislation that encourages full disclosure of environmental impacts and SECO documents and as such opposes confidentiality agreements between applicants and environmental consultants that prevent the disclosure of information regarding potential environmental impacts, potential mitigation measures or feasible project alternatives. And this is in accord with a, in 2003, we supported some legislation that did that, that failed. But I think that is, it's important to make sure that we don't have, you know, failure to disclose environmental impacts and mitigation measures due to the fact that there's some confidentiality agreement between the consultant and their applicant. This came from, originally the legislation came from when, I believe it was New Hall Ranch had a confidentiality agreement that didn't disclose an endangered species. So I think that's important. The whole point of SECO is to have that information disclosed. So that's what this one would do specifically.
The spine flower, that's right?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Other questions, comments, additions, suggestions?
Wouldn't that have to go through LAFCO too first, you know, to, to make sure that, that the, all the SECO information is disclosed? Is that?
Well, we can't tell LAFCO what to do, but we can certainly have that be one of our, our requests of the state, that they, you know, not allow for these kind of failure to disclose.
But you mean, does our, does this, before it goes into our legislative platform, does it have to, it certainly doesn't have to go to LAFCO before it goes into our legislative platform. But certainly, LAFCO could be involved when an EIR is coming forward, you know, LAFCO could be involved.
If, in fact, this translates into any law that requires it. Only if it translates into law. Other questions on the platform?
Steve, in regards to this one you had there, where it says enable local governments to balance preservation of agriculture, open space. So you're trying to bring more control down here than what the state's doing?
Yes.
Another problem I have is that we have so much land use control as it is, we want to be careful that we put so much on, we don't meet those requirements because we're, we're held responsible for requirements, right? So how do you, I mean, the more we do in more of these still requirements we keep putting on and more of these restrictions, we get to a point where we can't meet certain housing state requirements. How are you going to, how are you, I guess I'm looking at some of this, I want to be careful that, you know, I understand where you come from, but, and I also don't want to add more, more restrictions, but at the same time, we also have state requirements.
I, I think the best response I have for you is that I view this as, this is a philosophical position of the county. The devil's in the details in terms of the legislation that would be created. You don't want to create state, state legislation that goes overboard either way. And I think what we're hearing from our local communities is, is a sense that it, that it feels like it has, you know, from, from those numbers coming in, that it has gone overboard. They're not allowed to consider. The state legislation doesn't allow them to consider anything. So this would just say, if we could get any of these things to be allowed to be considered, you know, the water supply, a community is just in a, you know, a real bad water situation and, and right now, the state legislation does not allow them to even consider the water when they're, when they're making that distinction. So the devil, I, I think that the concern about abuse or the, you know, you know, like you said, taking this too far.
Yeah.
You know, this doesn't say take it to the extreme. This says, you know, let it be taken, but the devil's would be in the details of whatever state legislation is.
Right. I mean, I, I like, that's why I didn't say things like water, because water is, if you don't have water and you can't supply water to your people, that's different. The open space issue and some of the agriculture issue becomes, that's just a, you know, I want to do it, I don't want to do it kind of thing. And that's why I was more on the other side of it, that I agree, because we, you can't tell us, build this many homes and we have no way to supply water to them. I mean, that's, that's pretty difficult. So, okay.
One of the areas I see this might help us, if there's some enabling legislation where we have, we have agreed that farmworker housing is a priority and to try and incentivize farmworker housing and actually being developed and put on the ground and to have it in the urban proximity, which in some cases may be the sphere of influence, and to be able to, one, make that happen and, two, get some housing element credits for joint partnership between the city and the county in that sphere area of interest. And that might be more than the state even understands, but I think it's worth the effort.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Well, it's pleasure the board.
I'd, I'd move the legislative platform. I'd like to thank Sue Hughes. Every year this process, since I've been here, this process has gotten better. And I think it's, it's understandable. It wasn't understandable at first. I mean, it went, you know, before, supervisor, before you got here, this thing was, this thing was a real, tons of stuff was coming in and, yeah, it was, it was really difficult to digest. So, so thank you for every year making the process better. But with that, I'd move the legislative platform here along with the two modifications that have been introduced here.
And I'll second that. Sue, thank you for a good job.
Thank you.
Motion in a second?
There's a couple of things, Sue, that I'm not real excited about in it, but, you know, I, I mean, 98% of it is good, so I'm going to go on. And I do, I do agree with supervisor Bennett. This is really, in a sense, you make it very simple to understand. There's a lot of people trying to make a lot of requests and I appreciate you summarizing it down to this, this ability to understand for even me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll take the 98% by the way.
Okay, that's good. No, I mean, I mean, Sue, if we can agree on 98%, that's pretty good.
All right, please vote.
Sue, that's an A.
Thank you.
I didn't vote for it.
I'm going to point one out here just so people know, but there is one in here about tattoos. You know, environmental health does not have much regulate, much ability to regulate these tattoo parlors and that is certainly an area of potential disease transmission, et cetera, here in Ventura County. So that'll be one I hope we actually can get legislation through quickly.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you for the good work. We appreciate it. And we'll see, we'll see what moves forward in legislation and where the battles may be drawn, lines may be drawn. All right. All right, board, we're moving now to item 40, which is CEO's office adoption resolution for county recovery zone purposes. And Mrs. Madden.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Kristi Madden, Deputy Executive Officer in CEO's Office. As indicated in your board letter, today's action requests your board's approval of a resolution to designate the county of Ventura as a recovery zone. The designation is one of many steps that are required in order to access new categories of bond funds that were created under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. No projects have been identified to take advantage of this funding, but experts in the redevelopment field do suggest that the prudent course of action is to go ahead and establish the designation in order to preserve the right to access potential funds in the future. The city of Oxnard has already gone ahead and designated their city as a recovery zone. And as recommended in your action today, they too did not designate any specific projects to be funded under this program. While the current requirements of the debt limit allocation committee require that we designate a plan of issuance by the end of this month, it is likely that these funds will not be fully utilized and may subsequently be placed into a regional pool for access by jurisdictions who establish recovery zones. There are two different pots of bond funds that are being developed under the, this program, the recovery zone bond program. One pot of funds are for a local government, for general purpose governments, and the other pot is really for the private sector. We are really here principally to preserve access to the private sector portion of these bond funds. We have also been advised by the executive director of the EDCDC that there are discussions of possibly extending the deadline for getting the plan of issuance for programs beyond the January 31st deadline. But as has been my experience with various other areas in Sacramento, the rules are constantly changing. So we want to be poised and protect ourselves to provide access to these funds. Because the county technically eliminated our economic development function several years ago, we would be looking to economic development organizations like the EDCDC to help facilitate access to these funds in the future. Mr. Stensley, the EDCDC's executive director, is in attendance today to answer any possible technical questions you might have about the program. It is to reiterate staff's intent by today's action to merely preserve our right to access these funds in the future. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? I, I appreciate bringing this forward. We had some early discussions and certainly with Mr. Stensley. The EDCDC is our arm of economic development at this point because we are so fully partners with them. And I think it's one of those that there's, there's certainly no harm. In fact, we hope there's great opportunity in designating this. So pleasure the board?
I, I'll move the recommended action. I did want to point out, I, I, you know, in reading staff reports, you have to read a lot of stuff. There's just a sentence that I, that I just want to compliment whoever created this sentence. I just, it works. "A consensus has formed among the economic development community that the smart default position is to pursue designation of recovery zone even if specific projects not been identified." I don't, I don't know why that grabbed me, but I really liked that. The smart default position is, right?
That's right.
Anyway, with that, I move the recommended action.
And the important thing, too, you know, is that we're, we're preserving our right, you know, for future if we need it. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Please vote.
So if that was Mr. Stenley's phrase, it's new, and if it's Ms. Madden, that's great, too. Whoever did that, thank you.
We like to smartly default. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. All right, item 41, probation department authorization for the director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Long, board members, Ms. Robinson. I'm appearing on behalf of the chief probation officer Karen Staples, who had to leave this morning. My name's Mark Varela. I'm the chief deputy probation officer for the probation agency, here to ask that your board authorize the conversion of a, of one F, full-time FTE, Senior Deputy Probation Officer from fixed term to regular status beginning February 7th. A little bit of history on the position. It was created in fiscal year 2006, 2007 as part of a grant proposal that we submitted in collaboration with alcohol and drug programs to enhance our Prop 36 treatment services. At that time, the board approved that the position be fixed term position, established practice of human resources is that they extend it no more than three years. So we are here in front of you today to ask that it be converted to regular status.
Questions?
I'm, I'm just curious as to the funding. And the reason for this is that, you know, we have to rely on each year whether we get the funds or not, and that's why we did this program. So is there some kind of indication that this is ongoing revenue?
Well, it's ongoing through the end of this fiscal year, although the governor came forward with his budget proposal earlier this month, which requests that the elimination of offender treatment program services. So we included in the, in the, in the board letter that if the funding does go away, that we will work with our CEO analysts to recommend that the position be eliminated at that point. But we do have funding through the end of the fiscal year, at least at this point.
Is there a reason why we just don't, can we, can we extend this till the end of the fiscal year to find out if we're going to have the money or not, or what?
Well, initially, that was our, our plan, but in, in the advice of our CEO analysts was that we'd bring it to the board because we did ask for it to be extended from July through the, through December of 2009, which it was granted. But at that point, we were asked to bring it in front of the board.
But, but we could extend it again if we wanted to, instead of making this fixed?
My understanding is according to established practices that we cannot.
We can.
It's our, it's our established practice.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
This to me seems like it would be a smart thing to continue it as fixed term when the funding isn't as certain as we'd like it to be for a regular position.
Madam Chair? Yeah, there's a question I had, but I'm not so sure that I know what the right answer is. I mean, it seems the fundamental question here is, we've reached the three-year limit for this as a fixed term position. And so do we change our policy and say fixed term positions can go beyond three years? Or do we change our other policy, which says even though we don't know that the money is going to be here, you know, long-term, we're not, you know, we're, we're going to make it a fixed term position? I'd love to just hear from CEO's office, because my instincts, you know, but I'd love to hear from CEO's office before I made that decision. Do you have any thoughts, CEO or staff or anybody?
Yeah, we were caught in between that same rock and hard space, actually, because, again, we extended it for the six-month period. So at what point in time is it going to really be permanent? We're not sure yet. But we're not, there's a lot of grant positions that are permanent, that are permanent, that are year-to-year grants, but they're pretty much, we know they're permanent. This one has been continuously funded. However, we're, again, we're not sure whether or not this will continue on. So we were in that situation where the, the policy is, is the three years. So we said, well, at certain point in time, we need to either make, you know, make a decision whether or not we're going to make it permanent or, or continue it on as fixed term.
And if I could, what's the advantage of making it permanent right now, then?
It just, basically, it goes in, from a HR standpoint, I'm not the expert, I think it has something to do with, with-
Our relationships with the unions.
With the unions.
I mean, I think that there are concerns about keeping people in temporary positions for, you know, eight and 10 years.
Right.
And we've had, and there's certainly jurisdictions where that sort of thing has occurred. So part of this evolution of, okay, a three-year timeframe around temporary classification makes, makes some sense to establish some parameters. I think the important thing is, is that, you know, we've held firm to the fact that the money goes away, the position goes away, sort of regardless of what classification it's in. It really has to do with our relationship, I believe, over the long term with what we've worked out with the unions relative to temporary employment versus what's not temporary.
And if, I think, add, add to that, that's a great point, because if you recall, I think it was last, well, a couple of weeks ago, we came with a, with the position to add back a position in mental, in public health that we had deleted earlier in the year. So we're trying to be pretty flexible with the departments relative to positions. They're working with us as far as cutting positions and we're working with them to add them back in when that comes up. And it takes us a couple of weeks to come back to the board to add positions. Clearly, we can add a position back faster than they can go out and hire new positions. So I think that's what really comes down to our situation where we had, we were kind of beyond our policy limit relative to that three years. So we decided we better come to the board.
Supervisor, supervisor.
I'm sorry. Do we have, is any, do we know, is there an economic issue about a fixed position versus a, you know, one of these other positions? Or, I know it's not an HR question, but I mean, is there differences? Do we know?
From a budgetary standpoint, no difference. But from an employee standpoint, there's probably some, but I'm not sure, though.
Yeah, and I want to be careful that we have made a commitment to our labor unions, you know, whatever, that we follow through our commitments. That's one thing. But on the other side, are we going to see, is it, is there bigger expense? Is there, when we, when the position goes away, if somebody's in a fixed term, you have, is there some type of severances or difference? Do we know any of that?
No, that, that wouldn't, that would mean a fact, I don't believe.
Okay, so it's not a big economic issue?
It's, it's actually ends up being sort of a management issue. Because what happens is if you've got temporary positions, those are where you have to give up first. And you move people around and then, so you're moving regular people maybe into a temporary grant position, then they hold a position number, then the grant goes away, you still have to do something with that person. It's just cleaner if you move it, if it's, if it's- It's just cleaner if you move it, if it's met the three-year timeline, if you move it to a permanent position, and eliminate it if the program goes away. I mean, that's just a cleaner administrative management approach.
So your office is recommending that we do that?
Yes.
And that's the question I was going to ask, if it's extended or if it's permanent, if the funding goes away, then the position goes away. Is it an MOU concern, then?
From a labor standpoint? Generally, no.
Okay, good.
Do I understand, then, the CEO's office is saying that it provides more flexibility to have the position not be fixed term? In terms of how you arrange your employees?
How you move people along, around the deck, yes, it does.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move approval.
Some motion?
I'm going to second it, I just want to, I just want to ask, how from a probation standpoint does this make a difference?
Well, the position's being used to provide direct services to probationers who have gone through the court system and have been ordered to participate in some type of substance abuse treatment, so the position is tied into those duties.
I mean, how does, whether it's fixed or permanent, how does that, how does that, how does that, from your perspective, affect probation?
For this particular position, I don't know if it affects what we do at all. Obviously, if the funding goes away, we still have to provide the services based on the resources that we have right now. It'd be nice if the funding continued, if the position was a regular position, but the reality is, if the funding goes away, we still have to cover those services.
So from your perspective in probation specifically, it's not an issue whether it's fixed or--
No.
Okay. Any other questions? A motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. All right, next up, we have item 42, Public Works. Director of Public Works, sign a contract on a change order. Good morning, Mr. Britt.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson and Butch Britt, Transportation Department. This is a contract change order, which needs your board's approval to be able to finalize it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Are there any questions? Please straightforward. Pleasure the board. Motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Britt.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have Public Works, item 42, Sign a Contract on Change Order. We just did that, never mind. Item 43, Report Back Regarding the Advantages and Disadvantages of Our LCA Work. Good morning, Mr. Stevens.
Good morning. Chair Long, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency, and I'm here today to report back to the board from your October meeting, where we brought the issue of the continuation of the LCA program, and the board took action to continue the program. You asked us to come back and report to you on a couple of issues, one being the pros and cons of accepting new contracts this calendar year, and the other being the possibility of providing greater incentives for 20-year contracts. And so that's our report for you today. Something that we've included in the report, however, to provide you a little fiscal context, if you will, for the board, included a report from the assessor's office, and we have Frank Newell from the assessor's office here to answer any questions, if you have that. They put together a really a very useful report. I'm not sure it's anything that's been done certainly in the last decade or so to try and summarize the property tax impacts of the LCA program. And to quickly summarize the report, it identified a property tax, an assessment differential of approximately $600 million that would equate to a property tax loss in total of roughly $6 million, or 1% of that amount. Of that 1%, only about a quarter of that actually comes to the County of Ventura, so about $1.5 million would be the total property tax loss to the County of Ventura through the LCA program. And as we reported to you earlier, the subventions that the state had provided historically in the last year was anticipated to be approximately $300,000. So you can see that the subvention program that the states had in place has never fully subvented the funds given up. It's been something in the neighborhood of 20 to 25%. So hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea of the fiscal impacts of the program. On to the pros and cons of taking new contracts, summarize for you, I think, very briefly some of those. The, we'll call them, the advantages are primarily fiscal in nature, and that would be, there would be no new lands taken in under contract this calendar year, and any property tax loss associated with those new lands, of course, would not take place. And then there would also be a reduction in unreimbursed staff costs associated with processing those contracts. We've provided some information in the board letter to you for that. Each contract, for example, the assessor's office has indicated not quite $1,000 in cost for them to process that contract, relatively minor associated costs, I think, in the county council's office. The planning division work is through our fee schedule, fully reimbursed, so there would be no net change if we were not to take new contracts. The other, the disadvantages are primarily in the area of, you know, our policies that we described for you last time, that we have in place. And we highlighted a couple of somewhat esoteric issues related to subdivisions and the processing of those subdivisions for properties that are under LCA contracts. And I'll try very quickly to explain what that means. Most of our contracts that we process in recent years have been contracts for property that is already under LCA contract. It's that that property owner, that rancher wishes to perform some sort of subdivision, lot line adjustment or other subdivision, to change their boundaries, be it for farming purposes, estate purposes, whatever it might be. But when they make those changes in those boundaries, they need to adjust their contracts, so that we do not have contracts overlapping boundaries and creating a rather confusing situation. We had a number of those a few decades ago, and it became very difficult to manage. Most counties do it the way that we now perform those, and so when you make that boundary change, you rescind the contract and reenter a new contract so that it reflects those new boundaries. And it makes it much easier to manage the program, and it makes it obviously much easier for ranchers and neighbors to understand where those contracts lie. And so our reference to the subdivision impacts of not taking in new contracts would be that our current LCA guidelines require that new contract be entered as part of that action, so that we can keep track of the program. In talking further with county council about it this morning, we make a statement in there that we, if the board wished to continue to take those types of contracts, you would need to amend the LCA guidelines. In talking further, we're now thinking that that's not the case. The board would be free to take a policy statement, if you will, that, no, we're going to take contracts in this manner and not have to go, come back to you with amendments to those guidelines, if that were something that the board wished to pursue. The handout that just went around was some research that we've been doing, trying to collect information from other counties, and the board asked about that in October, what was going on elsewhere in the state. And as you can see, this is certainly not a complete list. Most counties have not even taken up the issue, but this is, these are counties that we know have, and what their specific actions have been. Most of them are, took an action similar to what the board discussed last October, continue the program as is, no change, continue to take contracts. A couple of counties, Merced and San Bernardino, San Bernardino have continued the program but are not taking any new contracts this year. And then you see a couple of counties that are accepting only rescission reentry contracts. In other words, a wholly new LCA contract, they would not accept, but in the spirit of allowing ranchers to manage their property boundaries, they did not want to stop that activity, and so they're allowing rescission reentries, which are in essence new contracts associated with lot line adjustments and what have you. That's a very interesting approach, and that's what got me talking with county council this morning about options that the board might want to think about. A couple, interesting note there on there that I wanted to pass along. A couple of the counties have directed their staff to look at alternative ways to fund their LCA program. I think it's just another reflection of counties being somewhat exhausted by the state's treatment of their programs, and they're talking, looking conceptually at some programs that they would use locally, so that they could continue the LCA program and not be tied to that state subvention program. It's an interesting notion. I just wanted to pass that along to you for your information. The, I think that's about it on the pros and cons discussion. On the 20-year contract incentives, we talked with the assessor's office about what our options are under law. They're fairly limited. We identified really two means of encouraging those. The first being some sort of a fee exemption, not unlike what the board action took a few years ago. We did that with our solar panels, for example, to encourage that. That's, of course, a much less costly exemption, but nonetheless, that's an option available to the board. Another would be to simply cease taking 10-year contracts. That is open to the board. Of course, I think historically, what's been going on in Ventura County, the landowners have purposely been selecting 10-year contracts, so that certainly would not suggest we're meeting the desires or needs of the local property owners, and therefore, that's not something that we would recommend. I checked with other counties, there, I was unable to find any, or at least that were able to volunteer to me, any incentives they're offering. The general response was the incentives are in the law. When you enter a 20-year contract, you get a greater property tax benefit. That's the incentive that is either attractive or not to a particular property owner.
How much greater do you get?
Well, it depends, and the assessor will probably strike me down for saying this, but it's in the range of 5 to 10%. It really just depends on the various ways. I don't know if county council would want to jump in.
Under the 10-year contract, well, under either contract, it's based on the income produced by the agricultural property, and under the, it's kind of complicated, but generally under the 20-year, you get a 35% reduction, and it's compared to what the base value is, and you get the lower of the two. And under a 10-year contract, it's more in the area of 10%, depending if it's prime ag, and there's some various factors. But generally, it's around 10, 15 versus 35%.
Chris, how many people do you, or how many landowners are just jumping in wanting to do this? Is there a large number?
Well, it has, last year, actually, was a relatively modest year. I think we only had four contracts. Only one of those was a new contract, the other three were rescission reentries. The year before, we had, it was in the 20s, I'll say roughly two dozen-plus contracts. All but, I think, four or five of them were rescission reentries again. So clearly, about two-thirds of the contracts and more that we do are rescission reentries by those currently under contract to adjust their boundaries. We get a relatively modest number of really wholly new contracts.
So wholly new contracts, if we're going to lose a lot of revenue on, it's very minimal?
That's correct. It's--
So because if we go the other way, we don't take contracts, and we discourage this whole thing about trying to keep this farmland and everything else open, wherein if, so we, I guess we balance that between really how much we're losing.
It depends on your perspective. The relatively modest number of new contracts would suggest perhaps prohibiting them will not result in a great cost savings to the county.
Right.
Yogo County, for example, used that same logic to say, that's why we're not going to take them, because it doesn't have much of an impact on the property owners. So you can take the same facts base and draw different conclusions. I might suggest that, given the really small number that we do here in the county, the impact on us from a cost-revenue side is so minimal that bifurcating the program might create more confusion than it's actually--
Right, and then the other side is, we do have this thing trying to preserve agriculture and everything else, so we're going to go against our own thought there.
Exactly.
Questions? Other questions?
We're going to lose X amount of dollars, you know, by not having, by having the properties in the LCA, but also on the other side, on the ag part, we're going to create more jobs that are going to create a domino effect that's going to help us economically all the way through, right? Because now we're providing jobs, and that's a domino effect all the way across, you know, to, even in bad economic times, we provide more jobs through the ag industry. So that wasn't even figured in there, right?
That's correct, yeah. And I think there's a letter from John Chris, and I think he made some testimony last time to the effect that this program helps keep property in production and is part of the ag industry.
More jobs, you know, created by keeping them under the LCA.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to take this opportunity to point out something that the board some time ago adopted this policy of asking for advantages and disadvantages when we're getting ready to make a decision like this. I just want to point out one advantage of that policy, which is, for me, you know, it's a good way to sort of look and do a quick check in terms of your decision-making, but the other ancillary benefit that I wasn't thinking of at the time when we adopted this is, it also just does a good job for me of refreshing my memory of sort of the whole program. I think, you know, you think differently about it because you reviewed the whole program, both the advantages and disadvantages of the program. Whereas if you had just come forward with, you know, we recommend that you continue this in isolation, we may not have even sort of looked at some of the disadvantages and those kind of things. So I think this is a good way for the board to stay up to speed on a lot of programs, because we get kind of a stop-check overview of the programs as we make these decisions. So I think the advantages and disadvantages are done really well. I appreciated the write-up and thought on it. I'm certainly supportive of the staff's recommendation and be ready to make that motion if--
Okay, the staff's recommendations are receive and file, and accept and process LCA contracts?
Right. That's the staff's recommendation.
I have a comment, I can--
During the calendar, so in other words, continue our current--
Okay, there's a motion and a second on that, and Supervisor Parks.
I have a couple of comments. This amounts to a little over $300,000, so that, you know, to me, that money can be used well by farmers who are having difficulties, but this doesn't just apply to any, it applies to all farmers regardless of income, including, you know, like a billionaire, for example, is in this. And so it's difficult for me to see putting funds to people who are so wealthy that they don't really benefit that much from it, and when they could be used elsewhere. And I look at the farming, the farming community right now is suffering most from the high costs of water. It's a big issue. And I know we don't want to get into, you know, it could be a slippery slope, but the idea that we could actually assist those farmers that need it would make this a lot more appealing to me. I'm definitely going to support the motion, but I do, I would like to be able to ask the farming community to look at potential incentives that we could do, realizing that there is this funding source that they have, and we're using it in a way that doesn't necessarily benefit those most in need.
Madam Chair, I made the motion, and I know we still have to vote on it. The one other thing I would point out is that I think what, by doing this, what we're saying is that this program has significant enough benefits to Ventura County that we're overriding another policy we have, which says when state funding goes away, the program goes away. So this is one that we say, hey, you know, that's our policy, but our policy has exceptions.
And I realize that we have many constraints as to what we can do with this, and so with that, you know, realizing we don't have, I would imagine county council's nodding, we don't have the option of saying, well, grant it to those who need it, and those who obviously don't need it, don't get the funds. We have to, we have to do it across the board for agricultural land preservation, and it is a goal of the county.
Supervisor Zaragoza, and I thought it should be to the people that live in districts one and five.
One and five.
And three.
And the important thing is, we're going to create jobs regardless of who the LAC recipients are, but the jobs are going to be created from there too, which is extremely important, especially at this time, you know, of the way our economic condition is. It'll help us all.
As the CEO said, there isn't a means test, and I think it gets more to some of the points raised in the Farm Bureau letter of the multiplier and the value, and the history we have in this county of having this as our priority, this being the agricultural industry. I would ask, though, that, because we are by this action saying that we will pay again out of our budget the cost of managing this program. out of our budget the cost of managing this program, that I think we should also, we should also evaluate this yearly. I don't think that we have, as we've seen over the last couple of years, applicants, there are not as many as there used to be. I think that, you know, somewhat the market will dictate that, but I think we always have to have the ability to evaluate this yearly.
That's a good point. I'd like to add that to the motion specifically, you know, make that part of our motion. And I think it also allows us to remind ourselves that we need to keep putting state to reinstitute the funding for this.
And it's in our platform.
And also to incorporate the agriculture community, because, you know, this is something that really affects them. If they have a, if they have some recommendations on this, that would be helpful. I know Mr. Chris would be here, but he was out of town, but still, this kind of issues of what is most needed, I think is important.
Well, and one of the things that we have here is, why don't we just modify the recommended action a little bit? Recommend the board receive and file this report and direct staff to accept and process LCA contracts during calendar year 2010 only and revisit this for calendar year 2011.
The motion, a second, accepting of that?
Just make one comment on this thing, just from a pure business. A lot of times we miss the idea, we say ag, we say farming. That is business to these people. And we have to be careful when we talk about the wealthy farmers, because some of the wealthy farmers are the ones who are going to say, listen, I've got this farm going, it's got 300 employees working and, you know, I'm just breaking even, I'm not sure. We change something like this and the guy says, I'm not going to lose $200,000 or $300,000, I can shut this down. So we have major effects. Remember, it's a business to these guys, so we have to look at, it's even the smaller farmers who are the ones saying, this is my only livelihood, so I got to make it work. But the big business guys is that we're, this is a regular business to them. They're going to look at it, do I make money, do I don't make money? And at the end of the day, when they say they're not making money, I'm done. Well, the problem, we could have hundreds of people working on that farm and another 50, 100 packing or processing or something else. So we want to make sure that we give all these opportunities and not take that away. Because again, we'll lose an awful lot more of the money in other places, so.
And that's what I was talking about, about creating jobs, you know, the more jobs we create, you know, the multiplier effect is going to help us.
It'll be interesting to see what the, what happens in Monterey and Yolo with those, with those approaches, the approaches they're taking. They are bigger communities, bigger ag industries in those communities, so interesting. Okay, motion, a second with the amended action. Please vote. Cast a vote, cast a vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, thank you. Appreciate the work on that. All right, now we are on to the Sheriff's Department, item 44, repeal and reenactment of ordinance. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Ms. Robinson. My name is Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director for Ventura County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. And I am here this morning to ask your board to read entitled only and waive further reading of the Disaster Council ordinance, which will repeal and reenact Division 5, Chapter 3, Articles 1 and 2 of the Ventura County Ordinance Code. What we are doing is basically renaming the Ventura County Disaster Council, has the Ventura County Emergency Planning Council and making some other technical changes. We are also asking your board to place the ordinance for approval on the February 9th agenda for final adoption. And I am happy to go through the other changes, if you would like, or I'll take questions.
There's a motion, a second. Are there any questions? Motion, a second on the action?
Good time for us to point out that been a great modification of this whole Disaster Council and Laura certainly gets a lot of credit for grabbing what is probably one of the more difficult things to do, which is to take a regional kind of collective group of people that none of them have to be there and all that stuff and turn it into a high-functioning group. And so you've done a great job with that, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We couldn't have done it without your leadership supervisor. Now with your continued leadership supervisor long, I think we're off to a real good start. And as I mentioned during our emergency planning council meetings, we're the only county in the state of California to have done this. We're being followed now by the city and the counties of Los Angeles, so we should all be very proud of the efforts that have taken place over the last couple of years. And I also want to thank Noel Claybaum and Roberta Rodriguez for help with this ordinance that bounced back and forth until we got it right. And thank you Leroy Smith, I know you're listening out there, for your help as well.
I want to thank Supervisor Foy also.
Oh, Supervisor Foy started this whole effort, right?
Yeah, no, but it's good, you're doing a lot and I appreciate you all taking that on because this can be a really important thing. And I appreciate all the changes you're making to make it really active and get people involved and I think it's great.
It's a very symbolic move we're making here today.
I was very impressed with the new structure. It'd just be so much more valuable, effective, all the right reasons to have it, so. And I like the renaming of the emergency planning instead of disaster response. That's kind of like a little more proactive.
Okay.
I also... I just wanted to comment, I know that Laura had worked on this for months and months and a couple of years, actually, before it got moving in the direction because she saw a need, so I think that's very valuable. And as Chair Long just mentioned, I think this is something that we should pursue a CSAC Challenge Award for.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, great. Yeah, just to let you know also, I presented our model before the International Association of Emergency Managers. And in June, I'll be taking this to the World Emergency Management Conference and sharing with them what we've done here in Ventura County.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you for the long, hard work and work yet in front of us.
Thank you.
Title of the ordinance, ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 5, Chapter 3, Articles 1 and 2 of the Ventura County Ordinance Code regarding renaming of Ventura County Disaster Council to Ventura Emergency Planning Council and related changes.
Thank you. And it will be back to us in February. Thanks, thanks Laura. Next up, item 45, approval to delegate authority to the sheriff signing the United States Department of Agriculture contract.
Move the recommended action.
Oh, he's been sitting there so long.
I thought nobody was here.
Is it raining out there?
I was going to say, I know.
I was really cold this morning. And I hope I'm not catching anything because I remain cold in this pleasant room.
We're cutting, we're cutting budget back everywhere here.
But good morning, Madam Chair and fellow board members. This is actually to delegate authority to the sheriff to enter that agreement with the Los Padres Forest on the new operating plan. What this does is increases our operation base up in the forest area principally during holiday weekends, so there's no cost incurred to the county and we're getting our operation expenses through the federal government. Love to answer any questions.
I was in favor, but now.
I appreciate Lockwood Valley giving some, always gets good attention, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
I'll put you on the spot. How often do you go out there?
About twice a year.
Twice a year?
Or as needed.
Or as needed.
Yeah. That passes unanimously. Next up, 46, ratification, acceptance, authorization.
Well, thank you very much. This is Chief Deputy Gary Pennis again. This is to authorize the ratification, the acceptance of the '09-2010 Project Safe Neighborhood Grant Award from the California Emergency Management Agency. This is so important to us because as we know, when the money disappears, the position disappears. And our smart default position on this is to make sure that every firearm that's used in a crime is put in the NIBIN system within 24 hours to hopefully apprehend the violators and secure a successful prosecution through the DA's office. This grant will now let us continue to continue with that part-time person to get this accomplished because it is a very important role. So this, I hope that you ratify and the acceptance of this money for the sheriff, it's $30,639. Every dollar with the forensic laboratory helps with this regional lab. Thank you.
Absolutely. There's a motion, a second? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all the good work of going after grants. Really makes a difference for us, thank you. All right, next up, item 47, the board, you have before you the proposed meeting scheduled calendar for 2010 through January 2011. And I know you received it in color, so you can really read the different color-coded opportunities we'll have to meet this next year. And that is before us for approval. And I'd like to just also add, if I might, that those of you who are thinking you might wish to have an off-site meeting this year, that the sooner the better that we can get that before the board and to the clerk for planning purposes, it would certainly make her life easier and probably ours too, if you want off-site meetings. So that's not on here, but for your consideration, to just please put that in your thinking. So before us is to adopt, approve and attach, approve the attached calendar board meeting and cancel all regular meetings of the board as shown on the attached document. That's the motion.
Can I make a comment?
Okay.
Since I know you're going to run these meetings so much faster than Steve or I, I couldn't even put anything up because, you know, I didn't want to show whatever came up. But I know you're going to. So you're sure you want to do all these meetings? Because, and the other thing I want to ask is, it says we're supposed to have a six-week summer recess. I only see four weeks.
What says we're supposed to have a six week?
It says all Tuesdays during, and during the six-week summer recess.
Yeah, well, an ordinance or something?
Yeah. I think we have to change our ordinance and order, or else we should just go to that six weeks and let these people have all that time off so they can get their vacations in. What do you think? See it there in that...
I'll just tell you, I do not support a six-week summer recess.
Really? Well, I didn't know, that's an ordinance, must have been in the somebody, other, some others must have been doing that for years.
Where is that?
Policy manual.
Policy, I'm sorry, the policy that was under the second discussion.
And we changed that policy by this action.
All right.
That's one we need to look at.
But I think despite of the fact that the meetings are going to slow down a little bit this year, I think this is a good...
I have, well, me and Noel had a bet, we're going to be done at 11:30, but we knew there was a...
Roberta asked us whether we should even have lunch this morning and now we're...
It must have been Lindy, all those football players.
I have a motion on the floor. There's a second.
All right, well, I appreciate you changing the other...
Good she cut that off.
Yeah, she did. She knows how to play the game.
For the next chair's job to do. That passes unanimously. And then the next one up is item 48, which is the assignments of the board for your respective duties and responsibilities. And it is before us and you all were asked repeatedly and did get responses. And so what's before us is...
Can we still make changes?
What do you want to give up?
Well, for one, I don't believe there are VISTA committees anymore. Those are on the bottom row. I think they put them together and I'm not on it. I don't think, I don't think it goes to...
Did Lindy get rid of something?
I don't think they exist. And then...
The commission restructured that.
Yes, there's no more VISTA committees, VISTA 101, VISTA 126. And then also, at least that's my understanding, the Triumpho Sanitation District is listed as Triumpho County Sanitation District, that's not really the name, it's just Triumpho. And next year, I won't be on it because we'll have an all-elected board. In the meantime, that, I'm happy to have that.
Well, that's going to an all- elected, huh?
It is. And then finally, just under SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, it says that number two is not a, is a non-voting member, but actually two is a voting member. And also that I'm not on the executive board right now, just on the regional council.
Okay, then I will ask that we just bring this back. I'd like to at this point, and if we could just pull it so we can clean it up and everybody knows what's going on, we'll bring it back at the next board meeting.
Madam Chair, just, if you're going to be bringing it back, Supervisor Foy and I have had some conversations this morning. I think it's, I think it's good in the long run to have some rotation in terms of our overview of our investments and the retirement board activities, et cetera. So, and don't correct me if I say what's wrong, but I think we've agreed that I've been the alternate and he's been the regular on the Treasury Investment Oversight Committee. And I think we're asking to switch those two and have me become the regular and Supervisor Foy be the alternate on the Treasury Investment Oversight Committee.
Right. And then on the retirement board, it's a, I think it's a three or four-year term? I was thinking I'd do it for one more year and then we could switch. I don't know if we have to make it a one-year term and then turn it back to a four-year term or something, then maybe Steve could sit on that board.
At least if we express that our intention is for Supervisor Foy to do it one more year.
One more year, yeah.
Then rotate, rotate out of that. So that's, you know, that's just sort of the second, sort of getting set.
Do we have to say something here? We just, at the end of the, I could say I want to get off at the end of one year.
I think you could just, I would assume you can resign.
I can resign off it and ask another board member? Okay, that's good.
And this, of course, is a yearly assignment consideration, so, okay, with those, with those changes, we will bring this back. I will bring this back at the next meeting. And we won't take action today. That is my motion then to continue it to February 2nd. Is that our next meeting? Thank you.
Groundhog City.
Sorry. And if you have any of their changes, please get them to me.
I'd like to move to receive and file the correspondence again.
And note the hearings for BCTC, February 8.
The transit hearing, yes. There's a motion and a second. Do we actually vote on the last one?
Yes, we can.
We did?
And we should make it, make it, make it known we're going to be done before noon? Yeah, we probably...
No. Okay, Mr. County Council, do we have any report out on closed session that we're going into next?
We will not have any announcements.
No announcements out of closed session. Then we will adjourn from closed session. And it is 12 o'clock, right on time.